All right. Welcome to this -- oh, it's hard to know what meeting it is, but this meeting of the Milton Planning Board. It's one of our many during this fiscal year, but exactly how many, I'm not sure. Okay. I'm Alex Whiteside, the chairman, and as is a practice that I approve of, because I usually, in trying to introduce people, get tangled, let people introduce themselves.
Ed Duffy, member.
Michael Kelly, member.
William Clark, planning director.
Tim Serwinski, assistant.
Emily Ennis, member.
Brian Furze, member.
That was perfect. We're going to meet again on February 12th, and then on February 26th, and then on March 12th, unless a member has a conflict. And when that happens, we usually are able to find another date. The past minutes got sent out, but they didn't get -- they didn't get read. So we're not going to approve any -- yes, Mr. Clark, you look concerned about something.
And one, just make the announcement that Emily Martin won't be here because she is sick, and you don't want her near you. She's got strep, so that's not good. That's one. Two.
Did you pummeage everything before giving it to us?
We did.
Just checking.
Public hearings for the warrant articles that have been submitted that deal with zoning. When do you want to have those? I'm asking.
We're going to -- that segues into the postponement of the Thayer Nursery hearing until February 12th. So it would seem to me that February 26th might be a good time to do the planning articles that are going to appear in the warrant.
Thank you.
And we'll get copies of this?
Yes. I need to put it in the paper for two weeks, so plan it correctly.
And did you put a -- or Emily put in a public hearing for the master plan on the 12th? Do we still want to do that if Thayer's been moved?
I'm still waiting for my copy of the master plan so I can review it.
I'm going to turn that over to the town planning office.
Right, exactly.
Since I have no.
Guilty.
Yeah.
Guilty. I get it.
All right. Well, you know.
But I want to make sure members have enough time to review before we start talking.
Anyone else want a -- is everyone else happy doing it electronically, or does -- would someone else like a hard copy?
I'll give a hard copy.
Hard copy for Ed.
I would say Volume 1 is probably the most appropriate for a hard copy. I'm not sure you want all 600 pages of Volume 3.
I don't, you know, I'm not going to review the rest.
Okay. Volume 1 is the implementation plan, so that's the one you really want to review. The rest is -- Volume 2 is technical information, and Volume 3 is the public input.
Well, it seems to me that there should be -- well, that's right. Why make a lot of hard copies until we know what's going to be in it?
Should we -- will you have enough time to review it for the 12th so Bill can post the meeting, or do you want to move it to the 26th? I'm conscious that we're moving Thayer to the 12th, and that will require some.
All right, we may -- we may -- okay, let's do it on the 26th.
Okay. The articles in the master plan on the 26th, then.
I'm just -- I'm not here on the 26th, so we --
But you could -- you could review it.
I can view it in advance.
In advance and submit your --
I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, that would make sense, because we're unlikely to vote anything on the 12th, because that's the first discussion, so that would work.
The 26th.
I mean, 26.
It's fine.
Definitely not voting anything on the 12th.
I'll view and submit on the 26th.
Okay, that's right. There are probably going to be some changes, and we're going to want to -- so it probably will be April.
Okay.
Citizens speak. Any citizens want to address the board on a matter of interest other than the East Milton Theater or the Thayer Nursery? Well, good. I guess that means we're doing our job or something. We have a plan at 27 Brackett -- or 427 Brackett Street, which will take a house that's currently not on its own lot, entirely on its own lot, and put it on its lot. Yes, sir. Introduce yourself for the --
Michael Tool, 27 Brackett Street.
For the viewing audience. You're being televised and recorded.
Michael Tool, 27 Brackett Street. Just trying to square the lot away. Kind of got shortchanged in the -- when it was done.
Yeah, you're going to get a parcel of 1,103 square feet so that your deck is -- and your building are the proper distance from the side lot line. And your porch is probably a little too close, but you -- we're not going to worry about that, I don't think.
Existing condition.
Existing conditions. And that's, of course, your hunt, if it is too close.
The front porch, yes, I see. Okay.
So, any questions, Ed, Mr. Clark?
None.
No questions. Ed?
We accept the plan as presented, Mr. Chairman.
All right. We're going to authorize that motion. Let me restate it. The motion is to authorize Mr. Clark to endorse this plan as not requiring subdivision approval on behalf of the board. Any discussion? All in favor? All right. So bring the mylar to Mr. Clark, and he will endorse it for the board.
You're done. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Have a nice night.
Now, we get to the report of the town planner. You've got seven minutes to wrap things up, Ed.
Seven minutes. Wow. Okay.
Or you could just do the high points.
That's all I'm going to do, give you the high points. I'm dealing with issues with the Governor Stotan and the Polte property. We actually are working on doing an architectural review of the existing buildings that are out there. We have the DPW's interns helping us with the creating a plan of the existing buildings. We're dealing with the paperwork for the Thayer Nursery special permit, dealing with the paperwork from the East Milton Site Plan Approval. We had Traffic Commission yesterday, which actually addressed some of the issues that you'll hear about in the presentation from East Milton Theater in a few minutes. Been working on the issue of the potential relocation of the Swift Hat House down in Milton Dealing with the issues of the Hendry's Building and the demolition for Zero Central Ave. Dealing with the 40B issues with the Hendry's Building and the Randolph Ave apartments that are being proposed. We've been working on the -- we've been working on the issues of potentially applying for 1.5 land use that we may or may not be able to attain. We're still working on it, so it's still in flux. And that should be enough.
All right, that is enough.
Jim?
Yeah?
Bill, would you expand a little bit on the Conley's down in Central Ave?
The town-owned portion and the Conley-owned portion need a -- need an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission. Both the Conley's and the town ask for continuance until we can actually straighten out some of the issues of the stormwater issues down there, the potential tank issue down there, and the issues on how to approach the demolition. I know that there are -- with the 40B issue, they had a continued hearing, I think it was last week, it was last week, that dealt with the continuation of the comprehensive permit hearing. Some of the issues that are missing deal with stormwater, because there was a -- their engineer came up and said, "This is where the water discharges." The peer review person came in, looked at those plans, and said, "Okay, this is where it is." When we went back and looked at it, we came back and said, "No, that's not right, because that's not where the stormwater discharges." They have to redo the whole thing. They've been down there TVing the lines, finding out that they don't go in any of the directions that were originally thought. So there will be a whole new stormwater plan developed for that project. It's following those issues, following the demolition that we're all waiting for, but there's issues with.
Thanks, Bill.
All right.
Thank you. Alex, quick question. Are there any costs associated at this point with the town's analysis of the 1.5%? Were the costs associated -- town costs associated with the analysis?
My time and Mr. Bishop's time.
Thank you.
Now, the selectmen have gone on to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee, have submitted an article for funding the Affordable Housing Trust with $500,000. And they're asking the planning board, however, on if we want to publicly support that and perhaps become a co-sponsor. And it seems to me that we need a copy of the article before we can discuss it in two great gaps. We probably should discuss it at our next meeting, however, because waiting until our hearing is --
Would be too late.
Would probably be too late. But we should get that, and we should get the article, and I think that's probably very straightforward, $500,000 for the Affordable Housing Trust.
We have the article. It's on the back of the letter.
That's it?
Of the email. That's it, yeah, for that. The details would be in the comments in the letter.
Well, so everyone has it. Does anyone want to -- I guess we should probably, if we're going to endorse it, have a different agenda entry.
Rather than just, yes, we should probably have a more detailed one.
I don't think that really sets forth exactly what we would do, or what would be proposed.
So you introduced it at this meeting, and we can take it up in more detail on the 12th.
Exactly right. And we do have 50 additional seconds to discuss this, if you would.
I'd like the article to state, you know, somewhat roughly what they're going to use the money for.
Maybe we should -- maybe we should request a selectman to come and address us.
I think that makes a lot of sense, because then we can have a back-and-forth about it, rather than speculating what it is.
I'd also like to find out where the money's coming from and what -- how that affects the town.
I think that these are -- these are things that we should address.
Yeah. So inviting a member of the board of selectmen to come to our meeting on the 12th.
I think that that's a good plan. All right. Now, at 6:45, and we're going to resume a public hearing on site plan approval for 556 Adams Street, which is the site of the former East Milton Theater. And at 7:15, I'm going to interrupt the hearing, and we're going to then continue the Thayer Nursery hearing until February 12th. At 6:45, Bill?
6:45.
So that's what we're going to do at 7:15. That should take approximately a minute. So Ms. McHettick, why don't you come and tell us what has been going on since we were last year?
Thank you very much. Mary McHettick, I represent Falcone Properties. And tonight, most of the talking is probably going to be by Greg Morris, our engineer, because many of the questions that you asked last time relate to engineering characteristics of the site. We also have the restaurant designer here, and he's going to show you a little changes and some other design changes to the side of the restaurant that were questions about. But I have also Bob Falcone here tonight, but the plan was, with the board's permission, was to ask Mr. Morris to come up. We're going to put out our plans, and he'll explain to you some small changes, but perhaps important ones, given the questions that were asked that have been made to the site plan. And he also has specifications for lights and other issues that questions were asked about. So I'd like to turn the -- I'm sorry? All set?
Yep.
Okay.
It's fine.
When he's ready.
You can -- your presentation includes whomever you wish to have heard, and once the presentation is concluded, we'll take it from there.
Okay. Thank you.
Not yet.
It's always tough to aim it in two directions at the same time. I apologize.
Is this the plan that we have copies of?
Yes.
Well, then you can probably swing it a little bit towards the people in the audience.
Again, for the record, my name is Greg Morris. I'm a registered engineer with Morris Engineering. We did submit a revised set of plans to your board yesterday. I believe you received the package. I just want to run through some of the revisions and changes that we made. Along with the set of plans, we also submitted some additional documentation, some spec sheets, in a cover letter outlining the changes as well. Reviewing the plans themselves, you'll notice that we've specified on the grading and utility plan, which is Sheet 4 of the plan set, in the middle of the building, at the back here, we're proposing the use of a pollution control unit. The pollution control unit, we also included specifications for that in the package that we submitted. That is a filtering system that attaches to the vents associated with the kitchen to prevent fumes and exhaust from escaping into the neighborhood. It's an advanced treatment system of the exhaust fumes for the kitchen. We've added specification sheets for the lights. We gave you cut sheets and actual specifications. In addition to Sheet 8 of our plan set, which is the photometric plan, if you flip to the photometric plan, you'll see that we have two different sets of lights. The lights in the parking lot are mounted at a height of 18 feet, which is in accordance with Section 7 H10 of your bylaw, which permits an 18-foot maximum. You'll see their locations are 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. The most important, though, that you'll notice with this photometric plan is, even though there is not a requirement for light cutout in the commercial zoning district, you'll notice that at the abutting residential houses on Church Street, that we have zero foot candles of light at those properties with the plans that we've specified here. Thirdly, we included some cut sheets and additional information regarding the dumpsters that we're using at the site. We've contacted Troup Waste Management. They have met with the applicant, the Falcones. They've set it up so that trash pickup would be mid-morning. It would not be at 5 o'clock in the morning. It would be a mid-morning delivery or pickup. It would be two times a week based off the trash generated from the restaurant. And we've included a wooden stick-built dumpster enclosure. We have some pictures of it in the package we submitted. We also included a picture of the enclosure on the plan set. Sheet 3 of our plan set, which is the actual site layout plan, we've added some additional landscaping, additional screening specifically. Again, along the northern property line, we've specified replacement and extension of an existing wooden stockade fence along the Heinz property, and it extends back to the other -- the 552 Adams Street LLC property, again, along this northern property line. Parking notes on this plan were also revised. Parking spaces, we have 25 parking spaces in our parking lot. That has not changed since the last time we were here. But what has changed is, we went back to the ZBA for our second meeting with them, and they have endorsed our parking numbers for this project. What we've provided is, we've provided a total of 64 available parking spaces. Those are made available between this property, which has 25 of the spaces, and we've also mapped out the second property, which is a Falcone-owned property at 4 Franklin Street. We provided a cut sheet to your department, I believe today, showing the striping of the 4 Franklin Street property. You can see it in respect to this. It's located essentially on the same block, well within walking distance of this project. We've specified that we would include the locations of the parking on the menu for the restaurant. We would include it on the website to the restaurant. We would also be putting out sandwich boards to direct people on the sidewalk to the different locations as necessary. Regarding loading and maneuvering of trucks into the site, we've done two things. We've provided you with a turning template showing the trash pickup maneuvers onto the site, in and out. This is a 10-wheeler front-load trash truck that's coming onto the site. You'll see that it doesn't infringe on the parking spaces. It's able to make the swings in and out of the site. We also met with the fire department. The fire department had no concerns with access to the site either. I just put up the revised architectural rendering that you asked for. You asked for some additional detailing, the architectural elevations, specifically on the east side of the building. The east side is the side facing Church Street. It's at the bottom of this plan. It's not -- it's the bottom of the plan here. It's the revised Church Street elevation. Specifically, you had concerns regarding the windows and kind of the facade treatment. Our designer, Steve Tedesco, who's here, if there's --
Who dresses?
Sure. He can probably speak better on this.
From the last time we met, there was some concern about these windows here, that -- and we came back to take a look at this spacing, and basically what we did was, we have brick in between these windows, so we basically pick up the scale of the -- in terms of windows, the neighborhood windows, you know, of the houses. And so it's more of a residential scale, these windows, instead of one large window. And I've also added a concrete sill at each window, and the windows, there was some concern about the height of the windows. The sill of that window is 12 feet off the finished grade, or off the slab, the interior slab. And the window is 3'6", 42 inches by 42 inches. And there's also concern, there was concern about the ambient light from these windows. Well, all of our lighting in the restaurant would be below that sill line. So the bottom of these pendant lights, more than likely we'll use pendant lights, they'll be about 10 feet off the floor. So we're not really interested in lighting up our ceiling, say, because it will be an exposed ceiling. So all the light will be below that sill line. So there won't be, there'd be very, very little, very little ambient light coming out of those windows. And there's a door here, and again, there's the service door, and there's an awning and an awning. And we'll put, we will put some ever -- Avarites?
Avarites.
Avarites?
Avarites.
Avarites. Here, there'll be green year-round in front of the brick panels. And also, we'll provide sconces on these pilasters to project about four inches off the brick facade. So these are the changes we made from our last discussion on the, on that elevation. Do you have any questions?
How many sconces are you putting in?
The sconces? I don't have the cut sheets with me, but we have installed, we're installing cut sheets.
How many lights?
How many lights?
Six.
Sconces?
Six.
1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6.
If I can answer that question, there's somewhat to the lights that are being put on the front side of the building right now. They'd be the exact same.
They're the same lights.
18 inches long. They're five-sided lights, they're LED, and they actually wall wash. They go up and they go down. They don't protrude out.
And those, the lights are, I have it dimensioned there. They're 10 feet. The bottom of that light is 10 feet off finished grade.
Thanks.
Okay.
Great. Mr. Chairman, I was also just given correspondence dated January 15th from one of the abutters. I wasn't sure if I could respond to that. I didn't have time to write a formal response. It was from Gerard E. LaFond, 74 Church Street. He raised two concerns that I think are addressed with our revised submittal. I'd just like to give you a response to that.
Why don't you do that?
Okay. Mr. LaFond, it sounds like he had two concerns. The first one was with regard to the drainage and the sewer pipes that we have connecting to Church Street. I guess I would offer one point of clarification to him. That is, we are not proposing a drainage connection to Church Street. All of our drainage is handled on-site through the use of a subsurface leaching system. We are not connecting to the drainage system on Church Street. Secondly, Mr. LaFond's letter talked in regards to sewer capacities, and specifically that he was concerned with us overloading the sewer at his house location on Church Street. There's actually a break in the line on Church Street with respect to the direction that the sewer flows. The flow emanating from this restaurant does not go up Church Street toward Mr. LaFond's house. The sewer flow emanating from this site goes out to Church Street and down toward Adams Street. So there should be no concern with backup heading toward Mr. LaFond's property because of the slope of the pipes out in the street. The second one was in regards to a construction management plan. The construction management plan, we did actually submit a full operation and maintenance plan. It's included in our stormwater calculations and report. It documents erosion control. It documents dust mitigation from the site as well. That appeared to be his concern, was dust. He does bring up traffic to the site during construction. We would certainly be amenable for hiring a detail, and obviously, a curb-cut permit and a street-opening permit, and whatever requirements the DPW has with those when we do the work in the street. Primarily, though, all of the work will be off of the street, and we would be having our deliveries in our construction on the private lot itself. So I would refer you to the existing documents that we submitted with the original submittal for the O and M plan.
Well, he probably is also concerned about the demolition that you're going to be doing of the two houses that are there.
Yeah. So those require a demolition permit with the building department. So those require a demolition permit with the building department. We would be required to file for that. The demolition, you know, we do have some notes that anything would be brought off-site for disposal. And again, a demolition permit overseen by your building department would be required for that work. I think the revised plans we submitted, I think we addressed all of the outstanding questions and comments that you had and gave you everything that you were looking forward, looking for with the submittal. I could certainly walk through the bylaw sections A through F if you want. We could review those one last time. If you have any additional questions, I could answer them.
Why don't you do that?
Your bylaw specifically, section 8D3, has conditions A through F that must be met with a site plan application. Condition A is that protection of adjoining premises against detrimental or offensive uses. With this application, we've documented that a restaurant is in allowed use in this business zoning district. We don't consider that to be detrimental or offensive. I would further point out that the master plan that was just published in December promotes the redevelopment of this site, and it specifically states that redevelopment of this site should be as a restaurant proposal. I direct you to page, I believe it's 150 of the master plan. B is convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site in relation to adjacent streets' property and improvements. Our site plan documents how we're going to mitigate pedestrian and particular access. Pedestrian access is managed along Adams Street by an existing sidewalk. It's managed along Church Street by an existing sidewalk. But furthermore, the Falconeys in their proposal are proposing to redo the sidewalk along Adams Street and bring it into ADA compliance, which it currently is not, as well as replace sidewalk along Church Street along these frontages. On their property, they're proposing a new sidewalk, and they're also proposing to bring the existing entrances along Adams Street as well as the new entrances into the site into ADA compliance. Vehicular access, we're utilizing the two existing curb cuts. We're utilizing public roadways that have been in existence that have right-of-way widths of 40 feet to 60 feet in width. They are certainly of adequate width, grade, and character for access to a site such as Section C of the bylaw, adequacy of methods of disposal for sewage, refuse, and other wastes from the use is permitted on the site and methods for drainage of surface water. Sheet four, which is our grading and utility plan, documents compliance with that requirement. It documents that specifically for the disposal of sewage, we're using a new sewer line, municipal sewer, out to Church Street. The building is already serviced by municipal sewer. We're also adding two new municipal water service connections. Again, the building is already serviced by municipal water. On-site drainage is proposed, where right now there is only two leaching catch basins on the site. It provides absolutely no treatment of the water and very limited infiltration of the water. We're proposing a fully compliant DEP stormwater management system that has a deep-sump hooded catch basin. It has a particle separator and promotes subsurface infiltration through the use of subsurface chambers under the parking lot. Refuse for the site, again, with our dumpster. We're providing a dumpster. We're also providing grease traps on the site that would be regularly maintained. We've already talked with Troop Waste Management regarding the dumpster. We've enclosed it in a pad. It is secure from the top and all sides. D of your bylaw requires space for off-street loading and unloading of vehicles, goods, products, materials. What we've proposed is we've proposed to manage the parking lot in such a way that our deliveries are being delivered in the morning when the restaurant is not open. The parking lot would be a manned parking lot. We would have, excuse me, we would have available all of the spaces that you see. You would also note that access to the site with our turning templates shows that you have adequate access onto the site. Once you're in the parking lot, there is more than adequate room for vehicles to maneuver. The bylaw specifically requires in a parking lot, it requires a minimum of a 12-foot aisle way for one-way traffic. We're providing a minimum of at least 20 feet in aisle width for all of our traffic through the site.
Could you just address quickly on the turning template? We got off topic. Saying access for vehicles, I assume that the 10-foot vehicle is the outside limit. You're not talking, as far as what can access the site successfully?
The vehicle that we chose is 40 feet in length.
40 feet, okay. Thank you.
What's the width of the pavement on Church Street?
40 feet. The right-of-way is 40 feet. The actual pavement is either 24 or 25.
And the same would be true with Bassett Street?
I don't have the width on Bassett Street. The requirement for one-way, which I believe Bassett is, is a minimum of 12.
Okay.
The last two sections are relatively quick. Section E is that the applicant needs to document proper use of the site with respect to unit density and proximity of adjacent buildings to each other. We would make a statement that we're not proposing any new buildings here. We're using the existing building at the setbacks that it's always existed at, and the density is no more dense than what currently exists. We're not adding units with this proposal. The density is certainly in conformity with the bylaw. In condition F, the adequacy of lighting to maintain a safe level of illumination on the site and whether lighting is properly shielded to protect adjacent properties. The photometric plan, as I stated, shows zero foot candles or light cutoff at all of the residential abutting structures, and that's with the lights fully on in all of their conditions. We've also specified that the lights will be equipped with shields, adjustable shields. That is not taken into account with our photometric plan. So they're subject to even further refinement.
Now, on headlight, headlight light, have you given any attention to that?
We have. What we provided in our documentation yesterday is we provided a picture along Church Street, and I'm gonna look to that picture. This picture at the top, picture at the top, right at the screen of Church Street, I personally went out, I took a couple of measurements, and what you'll notice is that the building that was brought up from the abutters is this building here. I want to say it's 566 Adams. I may be wrong with the address, but it's the building directly across the street from our exit point. And the concern was is that headlights would be shining on that building. You can see this picture here. What I did is I went out, I took the measurement. The window sills on that building are 78 inches off the ground. That's above my head. And what you'll notice, you'll see that there's a van standing here. You'll see an SUV. The windows on that side of the street are significantly higher than the headlights. So what we did is we took the elevation of the ground surface at our exit point, and we went up 41 inches to a headlight height. 41 inches is a relatively large vehicle, a suburban or an SUV type. And the elevation of the headlights compared to the elevation of the window sill, the elevation of the headlights is three feet below the window sill. The headlights themselves, the focal point, what we've done, what we did is we pulled the registry of motor vehicles information. Headlights are supposed to be straight ahead or in a downward position. I'm not saying that you won't get light spillover up to those windows, but the lights won't be focused on those windows by any means with this proposal. I would also note that all of the windows on that house are equipped with blinds, they are equipped with curtains. They were all closed in the middle of the day. And if the board feels that it is necessary, I think the applicant would be willing to consider installing some landscape if the board thought it was necessary at that location.
Okay. What about that ones right across the street? As you're exiting the premises, the parking lot, and you shine across Church Street, what do you have there?
The one at the corner of Mechanic Street. Because that one is gonna get the same light that it gets on it right now, because it's already getting all of the light coming down Church Street.
These are Church Street houses.
No, not Mechanic Street. There's two houses.
The Church Street houses, as you exit the parking lot, the cars will be facing across the way at the houses.
This one. That's the one at the corner of, isn't it Mechanic?
That's the one he was talking about.
Mechanic and Adams.
He addresses Adams Street, but it's side is...
Yeah. That's the one I'm talking about. This house right here, which is hers. It's, you're right, it fronts on Church Street. It has an Adams Street address.
I thought there were a couple of houses...
Oh, it's one, it's one larger house.
Right in the middle of the block.
No, because the other one has...
Nine Church Street. And it's my house and his house.
These two.
Those ones, those ones up top.
Exit that way, it doesn't affect this house, it only affects this house. And that's why you just gave the...
These two, and you're saying it doesn't affect us? Anything else?
No, I can summarize again, you know, each of the points. I thought that there might be more questions than...
What we're going to do is we're going to go right to the public, and we're going to get comments, and if they have questions for you, if they have questions for you, they can ask you. And you're going to give way so that they can come and sit at the table and be heard. And then that way, if they ask a question, whoever is answering will have to come up to the table also. Ed, do you have a question?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Last night, I was here for a traffic commission hearing. I sat in this seat, and I was told I was in the wrong seat, but I stayed here because I wasn't a member of the board. I should have been up there. Anyways, the, one particular hearing was the hearing regarding Ryan, Ryan Steele, is that what they call it? Steele and Wright. Steele and Wright down in Milton Law Mills on Elliott Street. That was a very, is a very popular restaurant. It's been down there two or three years. We held hearings on it. We demanded traffic studies, so on and so forth. But some neighbors from Morton Street came in. They did all the homework, as you've done such a great job of doing. All the homework was done. However, a neighbor came in, she's unhappy now on Morton Street. The cars are flooding her street. Everything was done perfectly by the book three or four years ago, but she's getting croaked, just a few houses up on Morton Road. They're getting croaked with traffic and parking and so on and so on and so on. So smooth presentations are wonderful and all the props and so on and so forth. Reality is, Ryan Steele, it didn't quite work, and some of the neighbors are getting clobbered. I just want to point that out, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Now, but a good segue, I think, Mr. Clark, you should report on the traffic commission's doings with respect to this application.
I'd like to have Chief Wells come up, since he's the chairman of the traffic commission, and, you know, one, respond to Mr. Duffy's comment, and two, you know, give the overview of what we discussed yesterday at the traffic commission.
What could be better than that?
Me not being here. I guess I got you just in time. My father used to say that when he retired chief in 1992, that he was gonna buy a hot dog's cart and sell hot dogs outside of popular town meetings. This would be one of them. He probably would have made some money. Thank you. Good evening. This is only my second time in eight years as chief, I remember before the planning board, so I view this as serious. But I have to begin by taking exception to what Mr. Duffy just said. That's not what happened at all yesterday. We did not have a hearing. We had a regularly scheduled traffic commission meeting. The way the traffic commission runs is anyone who wants to file an issue to deal with us, it's one, it's only one resident dealing with one house on Morton Street. We've had relatively minimal problems at all in that area, and really, the only thing that we want to address with Steele and Wright is to have them perhaps develop a relationship with, I call it Oscars, but it's not, Rite Aid on River Street, to move some of their valet parking over there, because it is Brookhill Road. But Morton Road, Morton Hill Road is really not a problem for us. The resident who came, she came at my invitation. I asked her to come, but, and Mr. Duffy, I take exception, I've known you my whole life. No one's getting croaked down there, and it's not, it's really not what's going on. The number of issues that we deal down there, I'll be very honest, these three restaurants, 88 Worf, Abbey Park, Ian Steele and Wright, all came within my first two years as chief. They were very new ventures for our community with all the things, everything from parking to outside dining, things that as a police chief, not so much of a traffic perspective, that I thought I might have concerns with, who really had minimal concerns with. I mean, is it any, we have more calls to Milton House, MacCary Cars than we do to the three licensed establishments in the town of Milton. So I just want to be clear on that. I didn't know that I was gonna be here for that, but I felt they had to set the record because it was not, it was just one resident who we invited. And we constantly tweak traffic anyway in parking regulation. Anyone who looks at the recommendations we make to the board of selectmen on parking, particularly congestion, gridlock, issues in the town, constantly, it's all the time. So I would not view the issue that we're dealing with on Morton Road as anyone getting croaked, or as that Steele and Wright working there as an establishment in the town, not working, that's very incorrect and I'd credit that. So now, with regard to yesterday.
Okay. One second. We're going to suspend this hearing momentarily.
Can I leave?
No. We're going to open the Thayer Nursery hearing, and we're going to continue the Thayer Nursery hearing until February 12th at 6:45. So continue. And now, that hearing has been continued. We're going to resume the hearing that we were just in.
Good thing you did that, because I don't have any answers to any questions about Thayer, Thayer Nursery, if you were gonna ask me that. So just to give you a little bit of a preview, as you know, the East Milton Square is an evolving situation right now, the implementation of the Howard Stein Hudson Report, as well as the recommendations that they've made, traffic concerns that we have, and obviously the application that you have. So from a traffic perspective, within the three business districts, East Milton, I was gonna talk about two issues. First is gonna be loading zones. Second is going to be valet that fall within the parameters of either Chapter 85 or Chapter 9, the rules of the highway, things that we, the police, define what enforce or regulate. So with regard to loading zones, Central Air Business District has been brought forth first, it was brought about six months ago by John Thompson, who's the town, because as part of the masterworks plan, the businesses that exist on Central Air in the business district, curbside deliveries, which have been taking place for years, are going to be no longer. So we have... So, we have taken some regulations from the City of Boston and the City of Cambridge, and we've begun to develop a draft to vote on in March, and to send to the voter selectmen for approval in the town of Milton. And in that, we would be recommending two loading zones, one for East Milton Square, which would be on Adam Street between Franklin Street and Church Street, and one on Central Avenue for Milton, Central Avenue Business District, actually on Elliott Street at the corner of Brookhill Road, which would be between Brookhill Road and Morton Street. Now, let me give you a little bit of rationale on that. One of the things I've said to the residents from this neighborhood who've called me, and I have to be very specific and clear, is that this is a neighborhood that I grew up in, my mother still lives in. Clearly, my feeling, the feeling of the commission was we wanted to do everything we could to remove any trucks from the abutting streets, specifically Church Street, Basset Street, Franklin Street. Right now, for the businesses that are Granite Avenue North between Adams Court and Basset Street, many of them use Adams Court to make their deliveries because they have rare entries. From what we've, and we've given a lot, we've looked at a lot of the businesses between Adams Court and Church Place, is they go onto Franklin Street, they go onto Church Street, and they do it illegally. So, our proposal, and the only reason we didn't vote it yesterday is John Thompson wants to just take this up and match it up with the Howard Stein Hudson report, and make sure that this is the best possible thing, is that in looking at Starbucks, the front of Starbucks, at the corner of Franklin, backing up to the Adam Street, that was a cab stand initially. About 15 years ago, it became a bus stop. About seven years ago, or eight years ago, we moved the bus stop from Franklin and Adams back up to Church, and that is where it exists today. We intend to take those three spaces, and convert those three spaces into a loading zone that would be in effect from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Saturday. The loader zone would also have regulations with time limits and who could use them, and we would enforce it aggressively, just as we would any other regulation within the town, you know, overnight parking, timed parking, any of that. For East Milton, we then would take those same exact three spaces from 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM, and they would be valet spaces for valet parking, controlled and regulated by the town. Within our regulation, we also create, would create a valet permit system similar to the service own system that exists now, and similar to the hardship parking permit system that exists within the town, that ordinance. We originally had thought about taking just two spaces, but the fact that you're going to use two restaurants, or the number of total seating, we're just kind of looking at what Boston uses, we felt three spaces was better for the loading zone, given some of the trucks that these take, and we're really adamant about that we did not, we want to get any trucks off of Franklin and off of Church. The only exception would be trash, because they're entitled to have trash, they're entitled to have trash pickup, all of them are, just as a house would, so, and it's the same size trash truck, so, but we want to, and we would ask the chamber and all these businesses, because this would be their designated loading zone to regulate their, I mean, it's giving them seven, three, it's giving them 10 hours a day, six days a week for deliveries, that's a, that's a lot of time, that's a lot of time. The final issue was regarding the budding roadways. There are two things that we want to look at. We are considering making Church Street between Basset and Adams, which is currently a do not enter from Adams onto Church, considering making it either a one-way or another do not enter to defeat any loop traffic from looping around. So, even if you went down, say Franklin Street, and cut across back, and wanted to come back, as people do to them now, they will no longer be able to do this. So, we didn't vote on that yesterday, but we're going to have to figure out which is better, do not enter or one-way, which one's going to work better for us, but that's something that we want to do, to try and alleviate the cut-through loop traffic. But we do think that by creating a loading zone and utilizing it as a, doubling it as a valet, the same three spaces in the square, you can service all the businesses between Adams Court and Church Place, you take the trucks that are currently, and we tag, we see, even in the GIS pictures we were using yesterday, we found a truck delivering a Starbucks in the picture on Franklin Street, we take it all away. The final thing about Starbucks is, in watching Starbucks, most of the people that go to Starbucks, because they have their own parking, park in the back and go in the back door. So, those three spaces aren't really critical to their operator, that was my first thought, because, you know, they're right at the front door, and there was some discussion amongst us on the traffic commission about this, that because Starbucks has its back door entrance in its own parking lot, it's really not going to have a significant impact on them. The only other things that would, would, there'd be some parameters within the ordinance for valet parking, because this, in Boston, there's some things like a hospital can have a valet, things like that, Milton may want, but we want, we don't really want to get into that, we want it really strict just on valets in a public way. But we think that this model will definitely alleviate the situation in the square, both for deliveries and the impact that has on this neighborhood now, both on Church Street and Franklin Street, as well as the cut-through loop around traffic in the valet. The one thing that John Thompson, he just wants to figure the best way as far as moving the valet around without having, we don't want it to impact the neighborhood. The final thing that we said, because I'd heard, heard some things about that 25 parking lot, and Mr. Falcone has assured me that they had no intention to use that as a valet lot, that that, and we didn't want that either. So, that's really up to you about that, our concern is really the roadway and the valet spaces and the road and creating them, but we intend to have this drafted, voted on into the voter selectmen by the first week of March.
Now, tell me about the, the Church Street, the Franklin Church, Franklin-Basset Church loop, and how you defeat that. You, you make Church one-way going in, or...
So, there's a couple, there's a lot, there's several things that we could do. It's already do not enter going in, you can't go in.
I understand that.
So, then the question is, do we make it one-way, local traffic only at Basset and, which we could do, we could make it, you know, do not enter local, you know, local traffic only going in there. We just haven't figured out the exact wording of which statute we want to do it under, but we want to come up with an idea to defeat that, and I think there is a way that we could do that. Because we talked originally about just doing it Doug and Lane, and then many of the members in... Yeah, we needed a cross street, and Basset Street's the cross street to do it. So, I'm, I'm not exactly sure how we're going, John's the engineer, so it's up to him to go back and figure the exact restriction that we put in place, or recommend, or vote on. So, that's kind of in his lap right now. That actually came from you or from him, that was brought up at a meeting prior to yesterday, just in an engineering meeting, we were talking about layout and flow in the square. The final thing that I will say, not related to this, about just for these neighbors who are here, one of the things that, and I talked to Mr. LaFond, one of the things, and I said to him as chief, anyway, my concern was alleviating traffic in that neighborhood, there is legislation currently in the, in the State House right now, I have not seen the final draft, but it's something we've been waiting for a long time, I can't believe it, is that it's going to allow cities and towns that have certain 30 mile an hour restrictions, being the lowest that you can, to drop those speed limits to 25. And we believe, while it has not been passed yet, that both Church Street and Franklin Street would fall into that 25 mile an hour reduction. So, that's something unrelated to you, and not something you would want, but we feel that we'd want. We understand, I mean, as chief, you didn't have to spend any longer in East Milton Square than the four hours at the protest the other day, to see that, you know, anytime you get a hiccup at all of any type, that, and it's part of the reason why they chose where they chose, and why they deployed the barrels where they put them, was that the East Milton corridor, now, the hole, as we call the 93 corridor, between exit nine and exit 11, with any interruption at all, can completely gridlock East Milton, West Quincy, and going all the way to Bergen Parkway, and then on Route 3, it extended all the way down to Route 20. So, we've been very cognizant of this. I do, and I'll say it again, I've said it to the selectmen, I'm not an engineer, but I've been, growing up in that square and being there and going there all the time, just looking at it, I do believe that these recommendations, plus what is going to come out of the changes from Howard Stein Hudson, are going to be a dramatic improvement in East Milton Square, I really do. The final thing too, that we did talk about, just, we do think if you do, if this restaurant does open, Mr. Lynch brought this up, the DPW director, that we may look to put a pedestrian signal light at somewhere at Franklin and Adams, in that area. I didn't, I don't know where it would be exactly, but if you look at how the square is laid out now, with the only two crosswalks, one being all the way up at Granite Adams, and the other one being a Church Street, it would warrant that, and the only way to safely do it would be to do it with a pedestrian crossing. So, I know I just gave you a lot, but we realize this is a big thing, and right now, the change and the evolving of East Milton Square, I just feel if we're going to do it, we need to try and do it correctly.
Mr. Duffy.
Mr. Chairman, Chief Wells.
Yes, Mr.
How are you, Richard?
Good.
I have a great concern about the cut-through traffic existing now on Brackett and Granite Place. It's, I think some of your suggestions are just going to push the cut-through up to Washington, Brackett, Granite Place, belch it, and come in back way. Otherwise, they have to, they can't get in Church, sometimes you're not going to be able to get in...
They can't get in, they can't get in Church now. The church is already restricted.
Yeah, and Franklin Street, sometimes it's so crowded with traffics on both, trucks on both sides of the street, a big truck will not be able to get in, so he'll have to go all the way around the loop, past Boogers, onto Basset and so forth, and so, and work his way towards the new proposed restaurant.
He can't, because he won't be able to loop up to Church Street.
He can get fouled up.
Franklin, Franklin, no, because Frank, the way we picked it, Franklin Street's already north of the loading zone. So, to defeat the cut-through traffic from impacting these neighborhoods, that's where you put in either a one-way or a do not enter at Church and Basset. So, and that only, that, I mean, I know it hasn't happened yet, but if, if you do approve this restaurant, that defeats valets from doing it, that defeats people from looking at a parking space from doing it, that, so, it's just, I don't know, we have to think about it, because we also, there's also going to be a parking lot, so we have to think about how we do this.
Well, if you tighten it up down there, you're going to push a lot of it, you know what it's like now with the cut-through traffic? This is going to, this is going to put a lot of more commercial cut-through traffic.
I don't think so. I don't think so. I, I really, I just, I just, I'm not, I, and I'm going to give you this, just this one change. If anyone's been to the square, the most significant improvement that we've done, and it was Joe Lynch's idea, not mine, that has had the greatest effect on that neighborhood, was adding the double turning lane at Granite and Adams. And if you stand there any day and watch the number of cars that now choose to stay on Adams versus turning right on Granite Place, Washington, or Franklin, it's significant, because they know that that double flow is going to get them. It, it keeps them from having to go in left, right, left, right. If a commuter can stay on a road and go straight and it's going to move, they're going to do it. And from a traffic flow perspective, it's incumbent upon us to try and do anything we can to ensure that. The final thing about the city that you don't realize is, and I think you do know this because you've heard it in other traffic meetings, right now, the left, the traffic lights in the square are so archaic that they do not talk to one another, only a couple of them do. But Church and Adams definitely does not talk to anything else. In the new system, it will. And it's going to help you keep that, I mean, we've been working on this for five years to try and get this to where it's going to become operational and make it functional. I, I don't, I don't see that, I will say this to you, if that did become the case, I don't think we'd be, you know, objecting to going back to look to restrict that. We've talked about that anyway in the past, to do, we already do restricted, I think, both, all the streets off of Beale, Rockwell Place, Eaton, all have mornings, seven and nine, do not enter restrictions to avoid that cut-through. But if it had to get to, to Washington and Granite Place, we would look at that. We're not, for, for the same reason that some of the things we just told you here were to accomplish two things, A, to help what you're trying to deal with here with the guy in the valet and the loading zones, but B, more importantly, to try and minimize the impact on the people that live there. So, go ahead.
Another question.
I would just like to point out, Mr. Chairman, that this whole proposal is, we're talking about this whole entire proposal without a, without a traffic study. And I think this board has a history of requiring a traffic study for projects such as this, and we picked, we picked the vendor, and the applicant pays the fee. So, I think before tonight is out, we should vote on having a traffic study, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Now, what we're going to do, that's, that's a, an issue which we can consider. It seems to me that some people here might have questions for the chief, and we don't necessarily want the chief to be here, we'd love to have you here all night, but why don't...
I have a question for the chief, please. Chair. Chief Wells, just to clarify, you were pointing out that there is a parking lot here on Church Street, so there's going to be an effort made to allow, how will customers get to that lot?
Yeah, so that's the one thing, we'd have to look at how we do this, so how, we don't want to block that lot completely.
Right.
So, but it, it did come up, and we've talked about somehow doing some type of restriction, whether, as you say, John's the engineer on this issue, he's the one who has to come up and, we may not be able to, but we, at least, it's incumbent upon us to look at it, I think we need to look at it.
Is there width, I don't, I can't have a scale of it, there's not width to get in and out, get cars up to the lot and back out at Franklin, right, to just have the one-way start at the, at the exit point, so to speak?
So, so have, so have Church Street two ways off of Adams until you get to the far side of this park?
I can't see if you've got the 24 feet you'd need there.
Well, you could possibly make Church Street one-way, just to pull into the parking lot, and then it's a do not enter. So, you come in...
The direction of Church Street.
You could come in, go in the parking lot, and then you have to go out the same way, so the only way in and out is Adam Street. That's, that's a possibility, that's a, that's a legal thing we could do. If you've ever been on Minutet Street. Yeah, if you're on Minutet Street in Dorchester, so if you go in the Minutet Village, you take a right on Minutet Street, you can go Bass, Gerard's, Blazey's, you can only go a little bit farther, and it becomes a do not enter, you have to take a right.
Right.
So, we could, that's a, I don't know, as I say, I don't know what John would come up with, it may, it may be that, that is a dual benefit for the first house or the second house, because they could then access their driveway both ways, they can pull in from Adams. But I would think, even if we did that, I would see it no further than the entrance exits to the driveway.
I agree with that.
It only makes it like a turnaround, like Eaton's, like an N and O.
Right, that's, that's...
Keeps it out of the neighborhood.
Well, yeah, it definitely keeps people from looping around on Church Street and coming up, which is what they'd have to do now, so...
The restaurant, maintain the second one as the entrance, still the first one coming off of Adams as the exit.
Yeah, yeah, that can work out well.
Yeah.
I mean, you have to study the implications, obviously, as you say, get the engineer involved, but that's an interesting idea.
All along, because if people are going to try to get to this parking lot...
Well, yeah.
Rather than fighting through the neighborhood, and if they don't know the neighborhood, they'll be all over the place.
Right, exactly.
And like we've always said, if they get into the neighborhood, and there's a parking spot over here on the street...
Right.
And this parking lot's full, it'll probably level it...
But if they know they're coming straight in, and they're living in...
The valet station's in front of Starbucks?
Yeah, right there.
Then if they came in, they came in around the parking lot, and then they...
Right out.
Take a right out, they drop it at the valet if they can't get a space.
Yeah, that actually could work out really well.
Yeah, because the valets aren't going to use that.
They take a right, they're already...
So, you can rest your arms for a second. You want me to answer questions from the residents as well?
Well, no, I, we're going to, we're going to, but we're going to let the, the play out. Yes, ma'am, coming up to the chair that Mrs. McCadrick is in and ask your question. But we're not taking your comment right now, we are asking a question of the chief.
Oh, chief knows what question's coming, too.
Just a question, Susan.
I live at the house that's most impacted by this, and, disrespect, but you, you, and you all think it's a great idea. That's my driveway. I can't get out of my driveway as it is now. Okay, so now I'm going to negotiate two ways of traffic, one coming in, one coming out, possibly, okay? The engineer you have for the town had an engineer study, and took away that parking spot that that car is in, because one of my children almost got killed, so that got put back. I can't get out of my driveway as it is. So, now, it's a great idea to access the parking lot, I can't function, period. Okay, then, you mentioned a 40-foot truck going in and out, doing circumference and radius, and turning point, on and on, but now, yet, the chief is telling me there's a loading zone. Where are we going with this?
They weren't aware of this, so they didn't know what we were coming forward with.
No, they knew about the loading zone, because that was at the last meeting. So, now I have a truck on Church Street, possibly, and a loading zone.
I, I was just going to ask the question, clarify that, the loading zone, the intentional loading zone is for all the materials that are coming in and out of the restaurant, to access the restaurant from the loading zone.
Yeah, it's the trash.
Template is for the trash.
Yeah.
Well, I, I don't know that it exclusively was, but...
It is intended to be now, right?
Okay, and that turning template will not operate if there's a car sitting right there, because it won't...
Good point. So, I do want to say this, no disrespect, because we know you parked there. We looked at this yesterday.
I can't get out of my driveway.
I know, but there's, it's really a no-parking zone at all between, we, that's not, you don't have a designated parking spot.
There is, there is a parking spot there, and it has been.
I disagree, I think that they've been letting you park there, but I think legally, if you look at it, it's a double turning lane, it's clearly arrowed out.
No, no, it's a double turning lane because of the engineer, and then Chief Mern realized with the engineer that you couldn't get out of the driveway. He originally...
So, here's what, so he's going to, we're going to let you come...
He originally took it away.
We're going to let you come in March, but I think it's going to go away. I think it's going to go away, I don't think... gonna go away. I don't think.
So, how am I getting out of my driveway?
Out of the driveway.
I can't.
We're talking about on-street parking.
I can't pull out of my driveway. If there's not a car there and a car on Nine Church Street, I cannot get out of my parking.
I don't understand why. There's a, there's a, right there. Why could you not pull out? There's, why couldn't you pull out of the driveway?
Because that car is blocking the cars coming directly up on my driveway.
What car? There's not gonna be any parking there.
This car and this car are blocking people coming right up, so I can't get out.
I just said to you.
There is five to six car backup in the morning.
I'm not gonna argue this now. I'm just telling you that the way we view that section of Church Street.
Once again, I told you this was going away.
All right, but we're, we're taking comments to the chief, and you're, you're making a lot of, you're not, we want questions for the chief, and certainly you're gonna have time to make your comments.
If we're going to a two-way, how am I getting out of my driveway?
I, if there's no, if there are no cars parked on the street, as the chief is suggesting, I don't see why you couldn't get out of your driveway.
So, basically, Nine Church Street and myself will be the only ones affected by two-way traffic. So, I have to dodge cars.
No one is, no one is determined that there's going to be two-way traffic. It's going to be looked at, as I understand it.
That's what I just said. But I do believe that us, we, you park is not a legal parking space.
But you can.
And I'm not the only, when I'm alone, we looked at, I mean, the answer is, all of us looked at it yesterday.
Oh, well, I'll go back and.
You can look, you can look.
Because we'll go before the engineer, before he did his report.
He'll be there, he'll be there. You can come.
Yes, sir.
Come.
Okay, one of her problems there is that bus stop that was put there a few years back.
Right.
That should never have been put there in front of my house. Is that, is that a consideration of moving that? That is the question.
All for the restaurant.
The T decides where bus stops are. Is it on both, is it on both? I know it's on her side. Is it directly across from you as well?
In Pax, it's right in the red light.
Do you want me in?
When the bus stops there, it blocks the traffic coming from down.
Church Street.
And it blocks, blocks it.
Here's what I say to you. I don't, I'm not sure, because we didn't really talk much about the bus stops in this, but I will look at the Howard Steit Hudson to see if it does move any of the bus stops. It could, it could. I just don't wanna say yes or no, because I don't know the answer right now.
And here's my other question. My other question is, it's part, part question, but part comment. I liked your idea about the, the signs and one-ways and all of that, and that works right. Santana has a, a one-way up mechanic street from the bank parking lot, the drive-through teller. It's been there for years.
One way where you can take a left?
You cannot take a left.
Can't take a left. Right, you can only take a right.
You can only take a right out of there. That sign is just a mere suggestion.
I give you that.
And the other, the other thing is, when they, when they wanna do the right thing, but it's not the right thing, they come through my driveway. So, they think my driveway's a roadway. They've hit my house, they've hit my fence, and this is without a restaurant at all now.
Now, this is a question.
This is a question. The question, the question.
I mean, you're talking something that I've never heard, so I don't know, I don't know.
The, here's the question. The question is, is this just going to be a mere suggestion, these signs?
No. You mean a suggestion that we, that we do what we can to keep the traffic off of this?
You're gonna post, you're gonna post a sign, and it's gonna be there, and it's just a mere suggestion. I wrote an article years ago in the Milton Times that the parking signs is just a mere suggestion in East Milton Square.
Well, I'll tell you what. So, I can only respond to things I get complaints on. So, that, what you're telling, I only know it because I know the history of the square, and I do know, I'll give you this, because the two streets that probably get the most violations, when something happens, a mechanic can pass. So, if you back up Granite Avenue as, as on the other day, people are gonna try and cheat. They're gonna try and go past the runway, they're gonna try and go up the mechanic street. I'm not gonna lie to you and say I can have a policeman on every street and every corner, it's just not, I mean, just, just the other day, just the resources that drew just for traffic posts was, but I will say this to you, whatever changes we put in place, and, you know, I've heard statements that say, you know, we don't tag. Well, I dispute that, because I have the Chamber of Commerce coming to us saying, can you please back off the tagging? So, I, I don't think, whatever we do vote, my primary goal is chairman of the Traffic Commission, and I think I speak for all of us, when we look at the traffic of this proposal and the passage of it, is to try and do whatever we can to, and we're not, I'm not looking at one specific house, I'm looking at the neighborhood as a whole, just as we look at the community as a whole, is to try and do everything we can to keep everything on the main street, to include putting, that's why we picked Adams Street as a loading zone, because I'm telling you right now, Abbey, Dunkin's, whoever it is, their loading trucks are stopping illegally, and we've tagged, but then you have the store saying, well, where are you gonna put us? So, we've decided to tackle it, and if we're gonna put it in place, we're gonna regulate it.
Here's my other question. My other question is, the, 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 the real problem that we have on Mechanic Street there, it's very narrow.
Right.
They, within the last, quite a few years, put three more parking spots on Mechanic Street. There was never any parking there.
They didn't do it. We would've done that. I don't think.
There's three parking spots there. My tenants can't get out of their driveway because of those parking spots. They're public parking spots. There's three of them.
If I'm correct, I've looked at, isn't your curb cut on Adams Street?
No, I have a curb cut on Mechanic Street.
Both sides.
Both sides.
You have two curbs. Right, you have a second curb, because I looked at the history. Didn't, didn't the prior Traffic Commission at some point give you a second curb cut when you put that house in? That curb cut didn't exist on Adams Street.
Correct.
10 years ago, 15 years ago.
Correct.
Well, whenever you built that house, you, you were given it, right, because I, I looked at, so, I know, we're gonna look at everything in there, every space, every, I mean, clearly, parking is a premium.
Right, but those parking spots, those parking spots went in there.
Are these on the right side, on the bank side?
On the right side, on the bank side.
They are there, they are there.
And my tenants cannot back out of that driveway, because somebody parks there. It's a very narrow street. Now, this goes on all the time. This is without the restaurant. I can't imagine what this place is gonna be like when you put more cars in here. And our peacetime is after 7:00 there. That's our peacetime. We ain't gonna have any peacetime anymore. I might as well just rip down the place.
Um, that's, I don't think that's.
And make it a parking lot of two, you know, because.
You're entitled to your opinion there.
It's impacting the residential property owners of that area. And that's the end of my question.
Who else has a question for the chief?
Okay.
All right. Uh, yes, sir.
My name's Gerard LaFawn, and I thank you for putting my.
We spoke on the phone.
Yes. Thank you for putting my letter in front of the board tonight, and thank you for your responses. At present time, there's a one-way sign beneath the do not enter sign at the top of Church at Adams Street.
Could be both. Yeah, there could be both. It could be, is it a one-way in a do not enter?
Yes.
I mean, they basically do the same thing. I, the reason I agree with you on that is I think we just recently dealt with a complaint from a policing perspective of one of your neighbors who was coming out, taking a right, going, and that's, I think we, you're correct, it's one-way, not just a do not enter.
So, is, is it truly a one-way from Bassett to Adams Street at this point in time?
Yeah. If that sign is there, then it's a one-way. I, I believe, though, that's from Adams, so that, because if, if it was only one-way, that means people in Duggan Lane couldn't leave their home.
Correct.
So, I believe it's a one-way from Adams, probably to Duggan Lane, because I do know there's not a one-way sign. If it were a true one-way all the way, when you came out Duggan, there would be another one-way sign to tell you that, and there is not.
Another one at Bassett.
Yeah, another, there is not. There's no signs there. There's only the one that you just referred to.
And consideration is being given to looking at a two-way.
Standing, or trying to do something to keep the, no, 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 no. To make it a straight two-way? No, I didn't say that.
Top of Church Street.
No, I didn't, the top of Church Street. That was just a suggestion tonight. That was part of tonight's suggestion. I didn't say we've made a definitive answer, one way or another.
No, no.
But I will, I can tell you this, we're not thinking of making Church Street two-way, unless, you're, are you proposing that? No.
No, I was asking. It sounded like you were giving consideration.
No, not at all.
Making that top of Church.
Not at all.
Okay, that was my concern. Not to do that. All right, thank you.
Okay. Further questions, Mr. Duffy?
Mr. Chairman, I just wish to reiterate that we need a, excuse me, we have to have a traffic study performed for this proposal, and it has to have parameters from, say, Washington Street up, going up Adams Street and all the way to Granite Avenue and down to Wood Street.
Well, we, we will determine whether or not that's the case, but we'll finish with the, the chief's furor.
I would just like to say, Mr. Chairman, it would be very, much more beneficial to the, to the people who are talking here if we had something on the wall, consistent faulty skill all the way around, and say, what's the parking, I asked for this when we started this proposal. I asked for this. And showing each parking lot, each, each parking space in each parking lot, so on and so forth, and who has the rights to this and who has the rights to that. We don't have it in front of us, we don't have it in front of us to comment, to discuss this intelligently, Mr. Chairman. So, that's what we need. Thank you.
Right, you're gonna do, I assume, I, it seemed to me that I, at the last meeting, I did suggest that you had to give us a plan of that lot and show the spaces. Is that what the best you got?
Mr. Chairman, we provided this, this to you. It shows the two lots that are proposed to be used by this application. It includes the proposed lot, which is labeled as number two. It also shows the first lot, which is the one at four Franklin Street. We've obviously given you the delineation of parking spaces at lot number two. We also provided the delineation of the parking spaces for lot number one.
We need.
No, here, they, they did.
We need the perimeter, Mr. Chairman, while the perimeter streets are affected by all of this, so we can talk intelligently.
Okay, so you, I, we do have, we do have this plan, which could be, could be made part of the package. Now, any other questions for the chief? We're going to, we.
One more. Sorry. I heard from my neighbor that the light.
Go ahead.
On the corner of Church and Adams is regulated by the DOT, as far as signal light.
It does.
I never heard that. That's a town.
No, he says, because he's trying to change the signal light, because the kid's crossing the street, because it's too quick on Church Street.
That's not true.
That's us.
Will it be regulated once this, whether it's going up Church Street, or whether you decide to do two-way, will you regulate that light? Because right now, it's poor.
We just, I just spoke to that. That light is like so archaic, it only talks to itself.
Right, but.
Yes.
Are we voting on this in March, or are we doing something about it now?
On the light, on the, the light system is coming.
The signal.
The signals are coming. The lights are coming as part of the East Milton project.
Okay.
It's all coming.
And as far as the bus stop, and moving the bus stop, we could not move the bus stop, because there was no crosswalk.
Okay.
There was no crosswalk. Originally, it was in front of Zoom or the bank, and it was in front of Starbucks. The reason why it got put down in front of our houses, per Brian Joyce, was, and MBTA, there was no crosswalk. Now, all of a sudden, we're getting crosswalk, because of the loading zone.
It's been there for a good five years, if not more.
It's been more.
It's been there for a while.
I tried to move it, because we have people sitting on our lawns, sitting on our porches, ruining our fences.
Just, just, by the time, I don't wanna answer that, because it's not, but we'll look at that. It's really up to the T. They make that determination, but.
But the signal light is gonna be changed?
The signal light is going to be part of the entire new signalization system that's going for the whole square that goes from Church Street for the whole thing, Brian Ave, Adams Street, Granite Ave, because it is archaic and it doesn't talk to each other. They don't talk to each other.
Okay. Any further questions?
Very quickly.
We'll come and, someone ask your.
My name's Rich Hines. I'm speaking on behalf of my parents at 20 Church Street. I kinda suggested a similar plan the last planning board meeting. I'm pretty happy with the outcome of the valet parking, and it's even better with the loading zones, because that's gonna take the trucks off the street. I just kinda wanted to add a suggestion that I thought about after, and it kinda ties into you saying you were gonna add crosswalks at Bassett and Adams potentially.
Franklin.
Franklin.
Franklin, because there is no, and if you sit and watch the number of people that cross back and forth just at that intersection every day.
Yeah.
It definitely warrants one.
So, one, one of my suggestions was, I, I think the parallel, I'm sorry, the valet parking is great, but you're only coming in from one side. And you mentioned that Starbucks, you know, you're not really affecting their business, because they have their own parking lot. So, my suggestion that I thought of after the meeting last time was to do it on the other, other side of the street as well. At Dunkin' Donuts, there's one spot there, and it doesn't really affect Dunkin' Donuts, because Dunkin' Donuts has their own parking lot as well.
But put a valet space on the other side?
Put one valet space across the street, so you have two-way. So, because you could run into the issue where people are coming from, you know, the Milton side of the highway, rather than the Quincy side, where you could have traffic backing up.
There might be a.
People looping around.
There might be a safety issue on that. Just, the fact that you're encouraging valet, you know, running across the street in an unregulated, there is some liability for us, whatever we, like, a lot of times, it would be easy for us as the Traffic Commission to just say, okay, let's vote and put a crosswalk at, at Adams, Franklin. But under the warrant, which guides us in the Commonwealth, and we can install a crosswalk, any crosswalk put there, just on the volume of pedestrian traffic, would require a pedestrian crossing light.
Okay.
And, and if we were to do that, and your mother or parent got killed, it would be, the liability would be placed on the towns.
No, it was just, it was just something I thought about.
I've never seen that, but I've only been reading this, these regulations out for a few days. Let me look and think about that. The one thing that we did try to do was, we understand from the Howard Steit Hudson report and all the input from all the different agencies or residences, and particularly the businesses, was they didn't wanna lose a lot of parking. So, but the valet would only be at night, and the pressure is less at night than it is during the day. So, I will say that we'll look at it. I don't, I just don't know, for, just, to me, right now, just jumps out as, I'm not sure, I don't have a legal answer to it, but just from a safety perspective, I'm not so sure.
All right, just one office suggestion. All right, thank you.
Okay. Further questions? All right. Thanks.
Thanks. Thank you for your work. Thank you.
I, I do think that one of the things that the commission actually brings to the table is the fact that, of the seven members that are on the commission, the, the chief chairs it, the town safety officer is there, the consolidated facilities director is there for the school's purpose, the DPW director and the town engineer. So, they're both engineers, and they're both looking at this. We have the fire chief, and we have me that go to these meetings. So, we're constantly talking to one another. Minus the town engineer and the safety officer, the same group meets every other week anyways to go through these particular issues. So, when they come up, we, we do discuss them a whole lot more than you may think.
Okay, now, why don't you address the, Mr. Duffy says that a parking study is, is needed here. What's your view? Have you addressed the traffic impact of this particular?
Sure. I think, I think what really hasn't been said is, you know, what we've shown is, we've documented to the Z, to the zoning board, and we've tried to document to you, is that we, we comply with the requirements for parking just with these two sites. We also have available another property that Falcone owns, which is lot number three, shown on this plan, with additional parking spaces. We're not taking credit for any of those spots. And furthermore, lot number four is a proposed relocation for some Abbey Park parking as well, which has all been looked at with a, with a valet plan that we put together, and that's what's being looked at with the valet spaces moving forward. So, we're only taking credit for these two parking lots. We certainly have available to us additional parking in this area. East Milton Square has, has traffic problems, you know. We've, we've heard that, we hear the residents' concerns. We've tried to address them to the best that We've tried to address them to the best that this applicant can with this proposal. I don't think it's necessarily this applicant's responsibility to cure all of the problems of East Milton Square. When you look at the trips generated, the net increase of trips generated on this site when it's developed, it is such a small fraction of the average daily traffic in this neighborhood. It, it needs to be more of a town-wide study. I know the town has started to look at some of that, and we're certainly willing to do our, to do our piece, and I feel that we have, by designating our two lots, by supporting the traffic commission and moving forward with a valet plan, putting up the money to already have a valet system put in place so that the traffic commission now has something to go forward to the selectmen with. To do a comprehensive study of the entire square is, would be huge for this, for this proposal, I think.
Haven't we, isn't there a traffic study that's been done? What has this East Milton parking thing been doing for the past eight years?
We're in, is it in 25% design?
We're waiting for a 25% design public hearing in February.
Well, you've looked at the, the traffic, haven't you?
Yes.
Okay. So, we do have, we do have a traffic study.
Right.
And the question is what impact this would have on the traffic as shown in that study soon.
Redevelopment was worked into the study itself, and it's, it knew that some of the recommendations were even to increase the amount of cars coming into the square.
So, it's looked at future projections already?
It does look at future projections. I mean, we've already taken into account the, the number of parking spaces, and the study tells you right up front, there's enough parking for everybody, it just isn't in the place you want it. The traffic flow, the traffic flow has been, we changed the traffic flow in that we changed Adams Street. We make everybody do the loop that goes around. And did the chief leave? The chief actually had four offices the day that we stopped it and had it ready to. He had two on each side, ready to take down the barricades because the police department didn't believe it would work. Within 20 minutes... He's back. Within 20 minutes, two of them went home. So, the, the traffic flow does work doing that. As long as we keep that slip lane, everything moves down there, and does it make you, does it take you a little bit longer? It does. But this is an area that is supposed to be bike and pedestrian friendly. This is your commercial district. This isn't part of a speedway. You're not supposed to be able to go through at 30 miles an hour. This is something that you're supposed to be able to drive through, see the store, not drive by and see that maybe there were lights on. What was the name? I don't know. The, the idea down there is to drive through slow. It's not meant to be a speedway. Does it work? We believe it does. When we talk about things that we've gone down to tweak, the, the two left lanes, yes, it works. It actually brings more cars through. Does it have another effect? Yes, it stops some of those cars that are trying to slide down the side streets because they're trying to do, you know, cut through to get further down the road. Do we need to do more? We're constantly doing more on the traffic commission. We're constantly looking for, if we put a bottleneck here, it's going to leak out someplace else. We find where those things are. We try to. I, I do believe we've taken and addressed the traffic down in this area.
All right. Well, maybe we could get excerpts. Yes?
Just a quick question. So, the study looked at future projections. You're coming up for the 25% design hearing in February. I'm assuming then that the changes that Howard Stein Hudson are proposing as part of this take into account the additional traffic from those future projections. So, any design that they come up with would address not only today's parking and traffic needs, but also those that come forward as part of the additional projections that they did.
Yes, and they're actually in the study itself. The study is online. It is in there. It does talk about the level of service.
Okay.
The level of service before and after. They're all in there, and it, all of the projections come out being a, a positive stuff.
Maybe we could at least reference these excerpts as to where they're going to be found in the, in the study that's online. Yes?
Yep. And we get to it from the planning page, the planning board's page online? That's how we get to it?
I think it's on the town homepage.
Town homepage?
Yeah.
Just so people at home know.
Okay. So, that will be, that will be done. Does anyone feel that there is a need, a particular need? I, I think we have to look at what we've got before we can say that there's a need for something else.
If they, if like Emily keeps pointing out, if this traffic study projects additional traffic due to development that consumes the new development, then that would suffice. But if it doesn't, if it takes into consideration only the present level of traffic and how to fix that, then we would need to see what additional traffic this development would generate from the people that have developed.
Well, I, I, yeah, I think that's right. I think that we should take a look at it.
We could compare the trips that are generated under this plan to the amount of projections that have already been done. And if they're less than the projections, then...
But do we have, do we have, right now, do we have the number of trips that...
We have projections on the traffic out of there.
I mean, you said there was going to be minimal additional trips, but what is that?
Yeah, I'd, I'd have to look up the exact requirement in the IT manual, but I could certainly get that to you.
Yeah, if you could email that over to...
That would be good. All right.
Additional?
Yes.
Could I just, if, if you would be so kind as to let me make just a general comment about how we've approached this traffic management, parking, traffic circulation problem. We've spent quite a lot of time from the beginning of this application and before we filed it to now, thinking about the problems that have come up in the hearings. And we've changed our minds about how to approach the problem several times, and I know at the Board of Appeals hearing, someone complained, well, you keep changing the plan. But we've changed the plan because we've begun to see that some solutions work better than others, that the neighbors who know the neighborhood are making comments and telling us what the problems are, and that we have tried to take those into consideration now with the final site plan that we've brought you tonight. And I, the, the solution is to study the square as a system and to take this proposal and to visualize it in the system as it presently exists. And I think we already know what the traffic problems in the square are. We experience them every day when we go there. So, what we've done is we've, number one, we've proposed a restaurant, because a restaurant doesn't open, this one won't open in the morning, so it's not going to contribute to traffic problems during the morning rush hour. It can get its vehicle, truck trips, you know, its deliveries during the day, mid-morning, which is a relatively low-impact time in the square. It will have some lunchtime business, but this is going to be primarily an evening restaurant, as is Abbey Park and even Steel &amp; Rye. And it, it, for that reason, it's going to have its greatest traffic flow at the time when traffic begins to ebb in the square. That's why we're making a restaurant proposal for East Milton Square. But, but that doesn't solve the problem because, you know, there's still the question of how managed, how well-managed will the traffic from the restaurant will be, and where will it go to park? I think that the owners have made extraordinary efforts to secure and own parking that will be used by this restaurant. They now own three, or will own when they've created a new parking lot on Church Street. They will own three parking lots, two of which are in this plan. One is the Falcone Lot, 39 spaces. One is the Church Street Lot, 25 spaces. And they have recently acquired the Sprint Building, or what's known as the Sprint Building on Granite Ave, which has 25 parking spaces. And they intend to manage all of the parking that they own to the benefit of this restaurant proposal. And furthermore, they've undertaken to have a valet parking company, the same company that manages valet parking for Steel &amp; Rye, which is a very good parking company, and the owner was originally a Milton resident, good reputation, do a valet parking study. And we went into the Board of Appeals with that study and with that plan and with that drawing, because the question had been raised, not only how will this restaurant park, but how will Abbey Park park? How are you going to manage parking? And why can't you work together on managing parking? So, that's exactly what the owners have done. They've talked to Abbey Park, they've talked to, to a valet parking company, and they've come up with a conceptual plan. It's not necessarily going to be the final plan, but it shows that you could do it, and here's a way that you could do it. And one purpose of, of doing the valet parking plan was to show the four sites that the two restaurants would, would be using and how much parking there would be. And we were able to demonstrate to the Board of Appeals that even looking at the two restaurants together with the parking that will now be available, that you'd have a 2.5, a one parking space for every 2.5 seats in the two restaurants. This is an application for this restaurant, so we have to demonstrate, you know, what we're providing for this restaurant, and I believe we've done that. And I think that we've shown you that we are open to many approaches to reducing the impact of parking. But we've also specifically studied things like lights as cars exit the parking lot. We've studied impact on immediate neighbors in the back, noise issues, how to create buffers, how to make the site look more attractive, and those are all part of the site plan as well. And I, I think at this point that we have provided a great deal of good detail to help you decide that this is an adequate site plan. And I hope that we've shown you that by taking this approach and even by choosing a restaurant application, that we have been thinking about East Milton Square and how it works, and tried to think of a use for this commercial building, which has been vacant for a long time, that's a good use for the site, and that will improve the way it looks and that will work well in terms of the way traffic will circulate. So, I, I think we've tried to take that comprehensive systematic approach. I think that we've thought about traffic in the square as a whole, and we've talked about this quite a bit with the Board of Appeals as well, because they do the parking permit, and, you know, we've tried to suggest to you that that has been addressed and discussed, and the Board of Appeals has been satisfied. They feel that there's enough parking, and that, and they, they were interested in the valet parking plan, and then, and they were very interested in the number of spaces total that we were talking about here. And, you know, finally, I just want to say, we are proposing more parking spaces by far for this restaurant than Steel &amp; Rye has. Steel &amp; Rye was required to provide a four-to-one ratio of parking. Abbey Park originally was required to provide a four-to-one parking ratio. We're offering 2.5 to one. It's much better. And I think it's in recognition of the fact that we see how these restaurants evolved, and when they're successful, they need a lot of parking, and that we're in East Milton Square, that we've done that.
Well, I think that the parking is, what we're looking at is traffic rather than parking. I mean, the Board of Appeals has determined the parking. There has been a East Milton study, which, if it indicates that this is not going to shut East Milton Square down, adding whatever the trip generation is going to be, as you point out, it's not likely to do so, but Mr. Duffy has said, let's look at it. And in order to look at it, we have to, we have to look at it. And I personally think that a new traffic study probably is not warranted, but still, you know, the issue has been raised, let's just look at it. I think that you're, you're right. I think there's enough parking. The question of how it's going to be marked and people are going to know how to get to it, and these are all things we will figure out. But, so, we're going to continue.
The, apparently, the traffic study that's going on knows the number of trips that are generated at each intersection.
Yeah.
And we're intermingling things here, parking and traffic. It's, it's different.
Right.
And, and we're looking for what I think your engineers understands to be somewhat of a simple thing, and that is how many trips are generated by this restaurant. And we could, we could give that information to the people that are doing the parking study, and like we've already commented, they could say, in projections, we've consumed that volume and more. Or they could say, hmm, we didn't understand that would generate that much. I mean, we'd at least give them the opportunity to look at that. I mean, with, with anything you build, whether you, I don't know, you build a church or a pop, you typically will give them how many trips are going to be generated in and out of my parking lot each day.
It's, and it's an easy, Howard Stein Hudson has a traffic model. It'd be easy enough for them to say, here are the trips, throw it into the traffic model, you're fine, or you're not fine.
Why, why, I, I think a simple way to do it, we put the burden back on the applicant to do that and get a very simple traffic memo from the traffic engineer saying, here's how many trips we're going to generate, here's how many were forecast in the Hud, Hudstein analysis, here's our, here, here's your information.
Right, exactly.
Do with it what you will. I don't think it's a full traffic study.
No.
But certainly, a traffic memo providing those two pieces of information is very easy to achieve.
Yeah.
Can be done very quickly and not on...
We've been doing a little, just lay out of the area and say, 50% of the new trips are coming, you know, I don't know, it's north, south, or east on Adams Street, and 50% of them are coming west on Adams Street from the Quincy direction, from the Milton direction. This is how many overall we should have coming in and out.
And here's the projected capacity.
Like Barry said, they're, they're minimal to be zero from the peak morning hours between seven and nine. During the course of day, there'll be X at lunch. At our peak hours, between whatever it is, six and nine at night, this will be the amount that's generated. I think you follow and getting at this.
Yeah, I certainly calculate that.
It, it just goes by a restaurant, the number of seats, so the number of occupants of the restaurant, and the IT, like you said, will tell you this is the X number you should have.
Okay. Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask a question of the engineer, please. What's the scale of the plan behind you, sir?
20 scale.
20.
Correct.
The whole town of Milton is on a 40 scale, the whole town, and on my laws now. In the old days, when I worked here, they went all on my laws. But the whole area that we're studying, and I'm saying all the way from Washington Street because it's going to be impacted coming from the south, the whole area is available to be spliced together on a 40 scale, so people in the audience can talk about this stuff intelligently. That's not a big, big job to do. At least you have, you've got a plan in front of you without the colors and all this stuff. You've got a plan in front of you showing the street, the houses, where the cars pack in front of the houses, and so on and so forth. It's simple, and somebody wants to take the effort to go ahead and do it. At least take the 40-scale plans we have and put it together, and then we can start talking intelligently.
Well, I think people have been talking intelligently.
Bullshit.
What's that?
Excuse me, that's not nice language to use.
Bullshit on you.
I don't appreciate that, sir.
Can I just make one, Mr. Chair, can I make one call? I'm sorry. I just want to refer back to just one of the meetings that I do recall with Howard Stein Hudson as far as futuristic. At the time of the plan, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, we got concerned about the library, which at the time was potentially going, could have been commercial property, the church next door, potentially a multi-residential condo, also the possibility that the post office could close or be downsized, and that could be, and I do remember them at one point coming to us with a plan that, that showed that, you know, those could even happen with what they were. You know, they were being future visionary enough to look out that far. It's, there's those types, I do remember, I do recall.
And that's the sort of thing I would have assumed, is that they'd look at current and make a reasonable estimate about future development going forward.
I think they clearly understood.
Answering the question of, you know, take the IT data, how does that plug into the model? It's minutes with the right engineer.
Right, exactly.
It's a letter.
If you ask this Howard Stein Hudson, is this, is new development going to impact what you've already seen? I mean, the first question might be, well, what is the new development, and how many trips is it going to generate?
Yeah, and what...
And if you give them that simple answer, they'll probably say...
We can give them what it is. From what Mr. Morris tells us in his letter, they can actually go back and check it. They'll do it, they'll...
Right, and just say, look, we anticipated this amount of capacity and more.
They agree with his number, they agree with his projections.
Or whatever it is. Yes, exactly.
Yeah, can I understand what we need for the next meeting?
Yeah.
One thing, one thing that I, I should say, this, you know, the plans only came in yesterday, and the public, didn't they just come in yesterday? They just got to us yesterday. When did the plans come in?
Yesterday.
Yesterday. The plans came in yesterday, so I, it, it is reasonable that they be available in the town planner's office for anyone who wants to look at them. So, I've just, I just mentioned, I've mentioned that for, for those who say, well, you've heard it all, let's get on with it. It does seem to me that there is stuff to be done, like your driveway. I don't understand why you can't get out of your driveway, and I think, Bill, would you talk with the resident and find out exactly what the problem is and see if we can address it?
I know, I keep looking at the picture, which is here, of that driveway, and I, I know I can get out of the driveway, but...
All right. Well, we're not going to, we, we don't...
An offline conversation.
We will take, we will take further statements, but further comments, we would hope on the plan rather than necessarily on your driveway, but why not? Come up and tell us about the driveway.
Hello, is it? Is your name Bill?
Pardon me?
My name is Dave Peppicelli. My family resides at the corner of Church and Adams Street. The reason why she can't get out of the driveway is because the cars that come down the street, the reason why those spots were put back was to block the cars from driving up onto her driveway. A while back, her daughter almost got hit by a car because there were no cars blocking that. So, with the two parking spaces there, it deters the cars from cutting into the driveway, and it does block them. And making Adams Street at the very beginning a two-way is ridiculous. It's only going to cause more traffic coming down from Adams, from Adams onto Church. It's going to cause a problem, and it's going to cause a problem for her at the corner. You, you want to take away a parking space from a resident to accommodate a restaurant?
These are two street parking spaces that you're talking about, which you say shield her driveway.
It shields it from the cars coming over.
And when someone is parked in one of those parking spaces...
Correct.
These are two street parking spaces that you're talking about, which you say shield her driveway.
It shields it from the cars coming over.
And when someone is parked in one of those parking spaces.
Correct.
Shielding her driveway, they can't get out.
No, 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 no.
No, 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 they shield it so she can get out.
No, no, no.
So, so by.
The shielding is to block the cars from coming through the driveway.
I get it.
Literally coming through the driveway.
Okay.
Okay? Taking the spots away, there is a sign there that says, no parking here to corner, not where the car is parked. That, that, Chief?
Please correct, but we believe that that sign should exist, extend beyond that.
All right, but the only problem with that, Chief, is the fact that if you're there, and there is no car parking there, there's no car in that spot, the cars do come down Church Street, and they do cut almost onto the driveway. Me and myself, standing in front of her car, almost got hit one day.
That's the key word.
So they do shield that driveway from cars coming down Church Street. It is, it is a really, it's an active street, and it's really busy. Nobody.
All right, I suggest, I suggest that, I suggest that, I suggest that people go look at the driveway.
I think, I think we'll look at this from a traffic point. We are looking at it now. This came up just yesterday, so we will look at it, and we may make a recommendation, so we'll see. It'll be at the next meeting.
Okay. Further comments on this application? Yes, sir?
Sorry, Rich Hines, just want to get back to the dumpster. Bob, I know you said you were going to build a concrete structure. It sounds like that's changed, I just want to kind of get more color in what is going to go in there.
It's going to be, it's a picture, Greg. It's stick-built, pressure-treated wood, solid, it's on fence, six-by-six posts, it's on concrete. If you built concrete, it's too noisy. It holds the smells and nothing, we were told not to use con, Mr. Clark, can you give it to that?
You don't, you don't want them to make it out of concrete.
So that's why it was changed.
The smell will stick in there.
If it gets hit, it gets wrecked.
It breaks, they can fix it. The other one, it just.
See, I'm just looking at this design.
Right, but you get grease on a wall, and it stays on the wall?
Yeah.
You get something like that, they can clean all around it.
I'm not worried as much about the smell, which we are, but more about the.
But the drainage there, too, is coming up.
About the rodent problem.
Has air. We have, we have a plan in place for rodents.
Okay.
There'll be a signed contract, there already is now with Abbey Park. We have one in our building, and they do periodical control, and they'll be done before the building is even started, they'll go in there and do pre-treatment, and they'll do it during the construction, and they'll be contracted afterwards.
Okay. All right.
You do want to watch.
Which all meets the law, and that's better.
No, absolutely, we also, I mean, my parents are building property, and that's a major concern for us.
But they can deal with the drainage this way easier, they can deal with the cleaning, the maintenance. You can do that with that, you put the walls up, and you're kind of stuck with.
Okay, I, I think.
It's not as good.
It's pretty solid.
I think if that's what you think is going to work, that's great, but I think it's something that we definitely want to be revisited.
Yeah.
If down the road it doesn't, if we do see a problem.
I think the Board of Appeals will revisit it if it's not. I think that's something the Board of Health is going to monitor for you anyway, that's.
Yeah, I would assume that's part of the inspection.
Absolutely.
Eli will be doing it anyways. Board of Health will be up there a lot.
I think we, we knew that you wanted the concrete. At the last meeting with the planning board, the planning board indicated they wanted wood. And then more work went on.
Well, I mean, we wanted something, and Bob suggested that they were going to.
Well, I mean, you wanted something really solid, yeah.
Yeah, we thought it'd be blocked, but they say that's not going to work.
So it's kind of been a back and forth. That's what I meant when I said the plans keep changing, but, so that's the reason it's now a proposal for a wood enclosure. But typically, in a site plan approval, there is, there can be additional language about what measures are going to be taken. So if we haven't detailed it already in the engineering plans, we can provide a couple of paragraphs, sort of what we just said.
I think she did, though.
But it may be already in there, I'm pretty sure it is. So it, it has actually been addressed. But, you know, as the chairman already said, the, the final plans that we submitted today, they were only brought here yesterday, so everybody hasn't had a chance to read them.
And the dumpster itself? I think that was another suggestion by you, that you wanted the top of the line.
Oh, it is, I think, and, and I think that they've, they've done that.
Oh, no, I, I, we have the specifications here.
I mean, they've got a pretty nice-looking dumpster up in there.
All right. Fair enough, that's why I just wanted, it was brought up to me before, I just wanted to make sure that, now I'm on record, that that's extremely important to, to my mother who, father, 10 feet away.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Tony McDonald, 4 Mechanic Street. With all due respect to the applicant, my comment is that tearing down these houses is expanding the commercial property in East Milton, you're building parking lots. It's impacting our, our neighborhood. This project should be considered, not considered at all. I mean, it's too big. You have to tear down houses to make parking lots, you're ruining the residential neighborhood there. Obviously, these people are here, they're dissatisfied. I would ask the applicant to reconsider what he's proposing here. Thank you.
Okay, on site plan approval, we're dealing with a lot in a commercial district, and it isn't conceitedly surrounded by residential neighborhoods, which is usually the case. Most commercial districts are surrounded by residential areas, and the zoning provides for a number of uses in the commercial district. And what they're proposing is a use that's permitted, assuming they have enough parking. So it isn't within the, in my view, it, it, saying, sorry, you can't do it, is not something that we can do on site plan approval. What we are trying to do is make sure the site is managed in as an appropriate a way as possible for the use. Yes, sir. Are you, yes, sir.
Brian?
Brian Kelly, I'm from East Milton, and I'd like to speak in favor of the project. There hasn't been much talk about people walking to the restaurant. My wife and I walked Abbey Park the other night. We didn't take any parking spots, and I didn't hear anyone talking about provisions for these restaurants in town if they have people, patrons walk. So I've heard of restrictions at lunchtime if, because of parking. Maybe you should consider some kind of a waiver for those who walk, that allow them to have additional patrons. That was one thought. I do have one major concern. I was at the first meeting that was when the Falcone family introduced us at the Milton Library. And I was concerned, when Mr. Duffy was in attendance, and he spoke out vehemently against the project, and that's before it was, as a member of the planning board, before he's even heard all the information, I thought that was a bias that he brings to the table, and that he might be making this a more difficult process for the applicant because of his bias. And I understand his bias, because he lives in the neighborhood. And so I think it's difficult, and I think it's hard to, for him to stand and look at this objectively, and I'm concerned that there might be additional hurdles made for the applicant because of this bias.
Right, well, I think that the traffic, the traffic study is, has been done, we just have to coordinate it with the facts on the ground. And I don't think that Ed is being obstructionist. Okay, who else wants to, yes?
Hello. Cindy Christensen, 59 Collmore Street, Precinct 7, Town Meeting Member. I'd like to say I'm in favor of this project. I'm actually very happy to hear, though, that through this process, some of the problems that have gone unaddressed in East Milton are now being addressed. I see that as very positive. I, I think it's unfortunate for the developers that, that they've had to, to be kind of the target for some of these. But I also wanted to announce that we're forming an East Milton Neighborhood Association, with the first meeting on February 4th, which is a Wednesday. It's at the Milton Arts Center at 7:00 PM. It's not forming because of this development, but because of many issues going on in East Milton. And I would encourage anyone who has concerns or thoughts that cannot be addressed through this process to please join us, February 4th, it's two weeks from yesterday, 7:00 PM, Milton Arts Center. And please bring ideas, leadership skills, and some energy, so that we can get this off the ground. Thank you.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Barbara Beeler. I live at 81 Church Street, and I just have some comments to make, not, no questions. I have, I am very concerned about this proposed restaurant and its impact to my neighborhood. I've been following the development closely, and I've been, I've attended two zoning board appeals. My concerns are, there is not enough parking for this proposed development. My understanding is that the Falcone family have provided Abbey Park with a month-to-month lease for their parking. If that parking is taken away for this development, there will be customers of Abbey Park, where will they go? I believe they are double-counting the same spaces. During the zoning board appeals meeting, it was disclosed, disclosed that the parking spaces dedicated to the site were to be spread through East Milton Square. It is, it's been very difficult for the patrons of the restaurants to find the parking. It would be not logical in a patron's mind, for example, to park at Dolan's Funeral Home on Granite Ave and walk to the restaurant. Currently, at any given time, you can see all the patrons of Fitness Unlimited, Abbey Park, Mr. Chans, who park on Franklin, Bassett, Antwerp, and Church Street. The resolution of the parking issue was to offer valet parking. Unless valet parking is mandatory, I don't see how this resolves the issue. Even the Falcone attorney, Mrs. McErick, conceded during the last meeting that she herself would never use valet parking. The parking situation in East Milton is already overburdened. It is my understanding that Mr. Chans has also been given permission to expand. The Fitness Unlimited has recently advertised additional classes. There are currently 30-minute parking signs along Franklin Street. However, nobody complies with the 30-minute limit. Parking is allowed, is allowed now on one side of Bassett Street, making one lane passable for two lines of traffic. In addition to the parking, there are some additional considerations of having these type of businesses grow in such a small footprint. The smell of the Chinese food is overpowering several streets over. I cannot open my windows in the summer. During the last zoning board department meeting, one of the committee members indicated, because the square is zoned for business, any business at all could be put in a space. I do not believe this is true, nor I believe that it's even a good idea for both the residents of the immediate neighborhood of Milton at large. The use, the use has to make sense for a size of the business, and the character of the neighborhood would be more comfortable for an, an adult bookstore or a strip club going into the space. Question, I don't understand why the process, why the liquor license were approved before the project was approved by the planning board. I invite you all to take a tour of Church Street, Franklin Street, Bassett Street, Mechanic Street, at any time. Witness the congestion there. We cannot pass the streets because of the numerous delivery trucks and parking violations. This is a small space. I am not against new business, I'm not against overwhelm, overburdening an area with busy area. One more thing, in the Milton paper tonight I read, there was 190 parking violations. Thank you for listening to me.
Okay. This man.
Good evening, I'm Carol Joyce Harrington from 41 Franklin Street. And she just stole most of my thunder, but I did bring up the fact last meeting at the appeals board, that I'm concerned about kitchen smells wafting through the neighborhood. We want to make sure that there's a state-of-the-art kitchen HVAC system. I had mentioned last time around, I don't need to look at a calendar if it's Wednesday, because I'll know the blue-plate special is chicken parmigiana, I can smell it all through the, the neighborhood. We can smell Chans, we can smell the home fries cooking over at Light Affair, which now I understand they're also looking to stay open for dinner at 9:00 in the Milton Fruit Center. The parking is an issue. We did get the 30-minute parking signs pretty much, almost all the way down Franklin Street, and it is not truly enforced. People will park there, there was a woman there for an hour and a half in front of my house last Sunday, and I'm about the third or fourth house down. If we call the police, they can't tag when I call, because they have to go and mark the tires when they get there, even though the person's been there for already an hour. So the parking is an issue. If people don't want to use the valet, they will park in the neighborhood. And that's a problem for us. We, we can't even have people to our home to park in our, in front of our house. The holidays are a horror show with the Milton marketplace as it is. We've had Cisco food trucks go down Franklin Street, because they're lost, they don't know which way to go. We had a tractor-trailer rig last Valentine's Day that was delivering flowers to CVS, go down Franklin Street, take down half a tree and all the wires that go with it. So it, it is a touchy place. We are on the, the line of a commercial zone, we understand that. But at the same time, we're residents, and we pay high taxes, our houses are highly priced, it's a good neighborhood, people love to buy homes there, but at the same time, things like this keep happening, and if the neighbors aren't listened to, or, you know, our business neighbors aren't doing what they should do with, again, the smells and whatnot, the trash, it's, it's a, it's a big problem for us all. Thank you.
Can we address the question about ventilation, please? Because we have information on that.
Oh, yeah, why don't you do that?
Sure. Provided on our packet that we submitted to you yesterday were the actual specifications for the pollution control unit. That was the filtering system that gets attached to the exhaust fans associated with the kitchen.
And it is, why don't you expound a little bit? It's a great system, is what you're saying.
It's, it's a state-of-the-art system. It's not a requirement in accordance with mask code, but it is an extra that we're proposing with this project. I'm not going to pretend to be a mechanical engineer and tell you the, the complete specifics about it, but I am told it is state-of-the-art, it is employed specifically to mitigate smells from exhaust fumes.
You have the specs in the books.
No, I, I, it is in, it's in the, it's in the revised application for anyone who cares to look at it.
I mean, the point of having this kind of system is that we've heard the complaints, and we've experienced them, of the smells from other restaurants. These systems are supposed to mitigate, which means there won't be smells. That's the purpose. So, I mean, it's just one of many issues, but we really, we understand the concern and the need to make sure that restaurants don't emit smells throughout the neighborhood. And that's why we're proposing this system, which is more than what would be required ordinarily. And I, you know, I think other restaurant proposals you've had recently have said the same, because they, we're all hearing this, and we all experience it.
We, we recently did a project in, back, hey, and talk about being tight, close to the neighbors, and this rest, this particular restaurant was adjacent to neighbors, and they have roof decks and all kinds of things going on on the exterior. And we, we put this system in, similar to this, it's called a scrubber. And believe me, you, you don't even know that restaurant is there. It's, it's top, it's, it's state-of-the-art, and we use, we use them a lot, especially in dense, in dense situations.
Hi, Suzanne Brown, 566 Adams Street, corner Church and Adams. Last meeting, I asked about the lights, and I asked if you could get a building to show me the lights, which was not provided. They gave me specs and a lighting grade, but they didn't show me a parking lot that is currently using the lights. And from what I understood, you told the applicant that was one of the things. Also, we didn't talk about building occupancy, which we talked about last meeting. The seating is for 140 inside and 20 outside, but yet we're not accounting for the people that are waiting, or the people that are at the bar, standing. So I just want to know what the building occupancy is. As far as the parking, we went to the last meeting with the zoning board, and they said there was enough parking spaces, but yet, if you look at the model that they project, they're using the Church Street, which basically has an impact on me, for 25 spots, but they're also using. also using eight stacked parking spots.
That is not correct. We're taking account for the parking that is delineated by striping. And the striped parking spaces are all that we need to accommodate the 64 required spaces. What we stated on the paperwork was that if you were to stack spots in the parking lots, you would have above and beyond the requirement. We have the requirement without the stacked spaces in the aisles.
And that is correct, but yet on every document you have, you're showing the stacked. Either you're using stacked or not using stacked because that is an issue as far as public safety, as far as if those cars are stacked around the circumference of the turning area, then fire, ambulance, whatever, cannot get to that building, they'd have to go to Church Street and go in from there. They would not be able to access the parking lot if it's stacked. And I did bring this up with the zoning, that's not true?
We, we, we have a letter from the fire department stating that they were, they're fine with the access to the site with the parking lot as currently laid out.
With the 25 spots, not the eight additional spots that you would use?
As, as shown on this plan.
That's included the 25 spots.
The 25 spots, I have no problem with, but it's the eight additional that you have listed here and listed on your drawing.
Which we don't take any credit for.
Are you using them or are you not using them?
We are not using them.
Okay. Thank you. As far as demolition and the impact on the neighborhood, taking down two houses, are you capping the utilities on the Falconi property or are you doing it on Church Street?
Respond.
You can, you can answer if you can.
We'll require a building department license to take down the houses. We'll contact the appropriate utilities and dis, disengage them wherever we're required to do so. We're proposing all-new utility connections for the building. How we cap them will be up to the individual utilities, the water sewer department and electric.
What is going to be the impact on Church Street? Are you, do you have to rip it up? Because that's my access.
We will be required to cut out into Church Street. We will be required to get a permit for the DPW and to repair Church Street.
Okay. And demolition, as far as the trucks and the removal of waste? Hours of operation, impact as far as dust, do you supposedly have it? But the neighbors would like to know how their houses are going to be impacted.
Sure. The, the building department will regulate the requirements for the removal, but it will all be taken off-site by dumpster. Typically, a 30-yard dumpster will be dropped off. The house will be crushed. It'll be loaded onto the dumpsters and taken off-site. The dumpsters are covered with a tar pollen when they're not in use. Typically, when the house comes down, the building department typically requires, you know, spraying of water to keep the dust down.
Is there asbestos in those buildings?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. And then as far as...
I might add, that is not a site plan review relevant question as well.
Well, it's detriment to the neighborhood, which was in your first article that you mentioned.
Demolition of a house does not require site plan review. That's a building department question.
So, we have a meeting with the building department, too? An open meeting?
The DPW is going to have a plan for this demolition. We're going to, I, I assume that we're going, the building department.
You said DPW.
What?
You said DPW. The building department will have, they'll have a permit to take this building down. There's no public hearing to it.
In many cases, there is a, a plan which regulates the demolition. And I had thought the DPW had been in charge of those plans. In any event, there will be a plan.
Okay.
And it, at least as I see this, any site plan approval, we would want there to be an adequate plan for demolition of the existing building.
And then are you raising or lowering the grade of the existing parking lot?
Depends where on the parking lot you are. The grading plan has all of the proposed and existing elevations on it. The grading plan is shown in sheet four of the plan set. For example, at the northernmost corner, the existing grade is 58 and a half. It's coming down to 58, so it's being slightly lowered. The main entrance here, or the main exit point on Church Street, existing grade is 55.3. It is coming down to elevation 55. In the middle of the site here, existing grade's 57, it's coming down to 56. It varies throughout the site.
Okay, can you just go back to the picture of the car coming out that will directly impact my house? Because the measurements you did were from street level and not from the parking lot grade, that's the problem. When they're coming out of the parking lot, you actually did it when they were on street level, your measurements, because you showed a car on street level and not coming out of the parking lot.
My actual measurements were based off of what the proposed elevation is at this entrance. And my measurements at your window sill are based on the grade that's there. There's no change on your property.
Not on the picture you showed?
The, the picture is...
The white car is on...
Simply a schematic based off of Google Earth. That picture there...
The elevation where that car is, is different from the, the elevation in the That car is already out.
Pretend, pretend this car isn't, isn't there for a moment. The pic, the purpose of this picture is to depict that your windows are 78 inches above existing grade. They're higher than a man walking by on the sidewalk and they're higher than a large SUV. The purpose of this car here, which is, which was cut in pace to that location, was to give a scale to the drawing and depict the location of the exit of the parking lot.
But what I'm saying, what I'm telling you is when they come out of the driveway.
Yes.
And they're not in the street level, when they come out of that bump right there where the curb cut is, they, the lights do go into the bedrooms, straight across. And you did say in your response, there would be light impact.
I, I said the, the beams are, the focal point of the beam is three feet below your window sill. And you are correct. I said that the focal point of the beam will be three feet below. That certainly isn't going to prevent light from impacting that window, but the focal point is below your threshold.
Okay, so the next meeting, when I show you the lights coming in, then we can go back and regrade it?
They exist, you can't regrade Church Street.
Well...
You're tied at that elevation. You have to match that elevation.
But you're telling me it doesn't impact and I'm telling you it does impact.
Well, if you can, if you can establish that, then...
I will.
The impact can be assessed.
I will.
Uh, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else?
Oh, can I get permission for Mr. Falconi to go in his parking lot? To measure?
As long as I'm there.
What?
You can call me and I'll meet you there.
Well, he didn't call me to go in my house.
Well, why don't you call him and you can go in together?
Excuse me, he's, he just made a statement that he did call me, but he did not call me.
Look, this is not something the planning board is going to determine. I mean, we will, we will, if you have a light issue, we will determine the light issue, but we won't determine who has called whom. Anyone else tonight? We're almost at nine o'clock, which is always a good time to stop.
Good. Good, I'll try to be brief then, I got the signal. Hi, my name's Elizabeth Lane. I live at 85 Highland Street, which is not in East Milton Square, to be sure, but I'm very familiar with the area for a number of reasons. I have extended family that's lived all over the square. As a matter of fact, I have a daughter who's living in one of the buildings that's being taken down. I'm really, find it very interesting that so far in this process, there's been really no talk of the fact that there's the loss of three affordable rental units. And, you know, I, I feel that if things had, you know, if we could rewind the tape, that would have been good for that, had been to, had been discussed at the ZBA on the question of detriment to the neighborhood. Because, you know, I don't have to tell you that affordable rental housing in Milton is a very scarce commodity, as I can attest, as I'm now trying to assist my daughter in finding another place to live. So, I, I would like to, to throw out here that I think going forward in the future, I think the horse is out of the proverbial barn on this one, but that, you know, we keep in mind the balance between commercial development, which is desirable, and, you know, having a good housing stock with a good variety, which is also desirable, and sort of not lose focus on that. I know both this board and the Board of Appeals are supposed to look at detriment to the neighborhood, and I just would like that to be factored in going forward. Actually, I was a little puzzled when I was hearing about all the different parking areas because it almost seemed as if there was an excess of parking. So I would question, you know, is it really necessary to take down these houses? Do you need that parking space? And I, I know that Mr. Falconi's in the business of rental housing, so that's, you know, kind of his specialty. The other thing that I wanted to talk about is the fact that I think this underscores a situation that maybe we've got, let, get a little ahead of us. I drive through East Milton Square and I see these empty commercial spots on the second floor. And, you know, we, we've dabbled a little bit with village zoning down in the, the Hendry's area, the idea of mixed use and residential above commercial and so forth. And I think East Milton is crying out for this because vacant space, unused, it's, it's economic waste. And as I say, there is such a dire need in this town of affordable housing of all types, especially housing that is walkable to services and so forth. It is a classic. And I know that this board is extremely influential on your policy setters, you make recommendations to the town meeting and so forth. And I guess I would like to ask for this to have more prominence going forward and have that part of the scheme. Because, you know, this limits to the commercial development that can be made in East Milton Square. It's really not, it's, it has to be village scale. This particular proposal happens to be in a huge building that's been vacant for so long. It's being developed for a single use, not a mixed use. It would really be nice if we, we keep our eye on that and, and, and try to encourage that and keep that in mind in applications going forward. I know that under site plan, you're very limited. I do, I do realize that. You can't prohibit a use that isn't allowed use. And this use has obtained its, its permit. And so that is that. But in terms of managing the effects, I, I do really wonder about whether this site, this particular lot is really needed for this parking. But I'm, I'm laying down some policy issues for this board to consider now and in the future. So, thank you.
Okay.
Alex, can I address that?
Um, one of the many recommendations in the implementation section of our master plan is to look at putting residential over commercial, not just in East Milton, but in all of our districts, so.
Right, and we have to, we have to rezone to make that happen.
We would have to, we have to investigate to see how it might be possible. It may be more preferable for some districts over others because of other considerations, parking being one of them. But also, just, we have to do the investigation and do the rezoning. But it is in there as something to look at.
Thank you, and it's good to hear that. And I want to say one more thing because I did hear people say that there's plenty of parking, it's just in the wrong place. And I think part of the rezoning can be this shared parking concept where people get benefits and so forth. And, you know, as I mentioned at the Board of Appeals, the Citizen Bank building may not be a bank forever. That could be in many, many different things. And I think we have to think in terms of whether this project or anyone secures use in a certain place, well, that might change. And obviously, those agreements for this, for parking have to be in existence and be enforceable for the length of period that the permit or that use might be in effect. So, you know, I, I was a little confused about what I heard at the Board of Appeals in terms of who had the agreement, the contract with Citizen Bank. Was it Abbey Park or did you have it? And I think it's important that there be a direct contractual relationship between each user of the parking and the parking space, not a kind of a piggyback kind of thing that could, i, if, if Abbey Park, for example, went out of business or turned into something else and they didn't need the parking, then what would become of that agreement with the bank? So, thank you for your attention.
Now, it does seem to me that since Abbey Park has been brought up and since some people are wondering where they're going to get their, where they're going to get their parking henceforth after this restaurant goes into effect, do we have any ideas about that?
Probably would have Vance Welch address that, Ms. Alex. The owner of Abbey Park. Thank you.
Good evening. Well, we did discuss this at length at the Board of Appeals meeting and included the various parking lots and how it would be managed through a valet service. So that was a big part of it.
But you're going to, I, I would assume that you would amend your site plan approval for Abbey Park to make provision for the revised parking scheme.
I think if...
And meeting the requirement for the requisite number of spaces.
When we combined all the parking resources, there, there was ample parking for both restaurants.
Okay, but I, currently, we have a site plan approval for Abbey Park says you'll use these, you'll use Dolan, you'll, we specify where your parking is going to be. You're now going to rearrange the parking, right?
Correct.
So, you should, that, that should be part of the site plan approval because if someone were to read the site plan approval now, or, or once you've changed things around, they'd realize that you don't have the parking that the site plan approval requires unless you get it changed.
Well, that's why we put together a comprehensive plan that involved both restaurants.
All right, so...
So you're suggesting that he...
We're going to put this to the planning department to come up with a solution here.
To amend your site plan approval, is what Alex is saying.
You have the extra parking, so you're losing it frankly.
That means you have to work with me.
Yeah, I mean, that, you're correct, it has, that special, that site plan approval references the Falconi lot, so you might want an amendment to that.
We want to know, in other words, Abbey Park just can't say, okay, we've, we've opened, we had the parking, now we have no parking.
But you have, tell them you have.
Well, they do have parking, they just haven't formally amended the parking.
But, but that's the point. If you've got to replace the parking you're losing. And that's all we want to know, has happened. And the way to do it is to amend the site plan approval.
Right.
And talk to Mr. Clark because he will discuss with you how easy it is to do.
Okay.
Okay.
Really?
It is nine o'clock. Does anyone else want to be heard? Yes, ma'am.
Since I did my homework.
All right.
Yeah, is this your pen?
I've attended all the meetings, has most, Diana Tulio Agostino, town meeting member, former Milton select person, and, notice I said select person that time, and has most of the neighbors have done, I've attended all the meetings. And it's the first time I've ever been involved in a project, now that I'm not on some other committee. In fact, I actually think I have the Abbey Park site plan with me, but I do know that from attending the zoning board of appeals meeting, that the number of available parking space, as a previous speaker said, are more than adequate. So, that kind of gets back to what I had asked Alex to, or the chairman, to qualify the last time I was here, jurisdiction. And it's so difficult and, you know, it's painstaking to watch residents who really have concerns go to different boards. I mean, we've got so many different boards here, but the chief of police was here tonight. He's very concerned and he's going to address those issues. And I know change is always difficult, especially when it's in your own neighborhood. And it's really great that both the zoning board of appeals and the planning board are working together on this project. And I'll get to my final points in a second, but I do want to hand out copies of, thank you for bringing that, the master plan, if you could share these among yourselves, over to the, there should be two sets there. Just pass it down. It is a commercial zone property. So it was purchased as a commercial zone property. And I don't think anyone in the room, whether you're for the project or against the project, would ever put the kind of money out if all of a sudden you thought that the two buildings that you purchased to have for parking weren't going to be taken down for parking. As I mentioned last time, my neighbor is a homeowner for over 30 years. So for 30 years, I've always known that the houses were purchased for parking. And they're not at the level of condition that they should be in to be habitable. They would need major renovations for a company like Falconi to allow residents to live in it. They're not completely dilapidated, but they're there to be torn down. It currently is vacant property. And I know that last time I forgot to mention that Harry used to come home with drug paraphernalia from the property, because that's what currently goes on there. And when you put in a business and you bring people into the area, you're going to push out that entity. I used to actually look at Harry and be... I used to actually look at Harry and be amazed at how often this was occurring, the vandalism. I'm sure if you went behind Starbucks, the, the property was always being spray painted. So, we're taking a vacant property, redesigning it, and when you do that, the property values in the neighborhood go up. And you, you can't discard that great benefit to bringing in something new. The biggest thing for me personally, I think you all should be thanked for the original permit you gave, which allowed all the businesses in the front, the facade, I had gone down there and Bill had shown me how the brick was ready to fall off, but making it handicap accessible is certainly an improvement for any building in the town. And I think people, when you live in a town with, there's an old little town square, you forget about those things. And it's not just about wheelchairs. It's about little old men who need to go to the barber shop and they can't step up. So, having that sidewalk, you know, level, in fact, this was another thing Harry told me, he said for years he tried to get the town to fix the sidewalk, because the people were tripping on it, young and old. So, those are, they sound like little things, but they're very, very, very important to improving the overall vibrancy, as well as look and safety of East Milton Square. Some of the items I did personally, I mean, right now, you do have cars going in and out. I think the engineer mentioned he's not changing the cut. So, I did notice during the day, shades were down. I mean, maybe the developer, Mr. Falconi, could buy room dockinging shades so that, you know, it's something that you might consider. But the building, as you mentioned, the windows are substantially higher. It's, it's amazing. And if your lights from your car are really going to impact that window to the degree that you would squelch this project, then I think you need to get your car, re, the sticker on your front windshield checked, because we all get our cars checked. You go into the garage, there is a line, and the light can't fluctuate too much. So, that's very interesting. I actually drove by the place last night to check out the lights, because I was hoping to see how the lights were working on the front, now that all, everything appears to be down, but they weren't on. So, that might help the neighbors when they do see that, how they're working. The, I did Google the traffic study commission. And the question you brought up about proposed, were they looking at additional? And one of the frequently asked questions is, how many additional spaces would be needed if the square expands, such as more stores or mixed-use housing? And the answer from the traffic commission, which is on the website for the town, if there is a change in business mix over time, more parking may be needed. The potential for future growth or change is why the town approved a middle-of-the-road approach that creates a modest amount of additional parking. So, I think that gives this board two answers tonight. One, the proposed parking for the committee does have an increased number, but the second portion of the answer is, the business before you is adding 25 spaces with the two houses. And that's exactly what the frequently asked question mentioned. Addressing things like loading zone and valet parking, these are long overdue. Abbey Park, you know, it's a real shame that maybe there wasn't this much commotion back then for Abbey Park, but it brought the traffic commission out, it brought the selectmen out, it brought the, you know, building department was looking. And I might suggest, if in fact, the parking space that is illegal, which was created or which some residents were allowed to park in order to help them back out, in Boston, when there are situations like that, they will use striping, or there's other, what are they called?
We actually use striping here. We've used it in other places.
But what's the other thing that they started using in the square to make sure people didn't, like, cutouts? Bump outs, thank you. Right, there are different things that this board doesn't necessarily have jurisdiction on, that the DPW, working with the traffic commission, certainly has said that they want to address. The only meeting I did miss was yesterday's traffic commission. So, those are things that need to be worked on, but they can be worked on. And the new, the traffic study, or the traffic plan, is adding 36 to 44 more spaces. That's a sizable amount of spaces. And then, I would like to point out, someone did bring this up, I listened to what everything the neighbors say, and I ferociously take notes so that I can try to see how you can solve their issues. Fitness Unlimited, I've been told by employees in the square, that Fitness Unlimited patrons start, they start parking, and they'll be parked all the way down Adam Street at quarter five in the morning. They start at quarter five, and I don't think the place closes till nine. Employees have told me who work in the square that they're parking everywhere. And when you think about it, Fitness Unlimited has no designated parking. So, I, I implore this board to consider, when you're talking about parking and traffic, you know, is it really the proposal in front of you that's causing the problem? Or is it something else? And I'm amazed that Fitness Unlimited, I mean, I would stand with the neighbors, and I don't even live down there, but I do need to park in that area, I would stand with them. I don't see how this place keeps expanding. Someone said to me, when I started asking, how do they expand so, so much? They said they're grandfathered. But that definitely, I think, is probably 50% of the problem, starting early in the morning through the day. It's just absolutely crazy. The other concept and concern is that I do believe the developer thought about what would have the least impact. And I know a restaurant sounds like, you know, people coming and going, but you know that they're there for several hours, and then they turn over. But if it was a office building, and if there was a, you know, a parking garage put up, because it is commercial property, I mean, a proposal could come for anything. And I believe I asked you last time, you know, could apartments go there and they'd have to get special approval, I think you said? And if we want to limit the impact on the neighborhood, and if that's what the developer was thinking, because don't forget, the developer's in the business of commercial office space and apartments. They have not been in the business of restaurants, yet they went out and got the best engineer and restaurant designer they could pull together for our town. So, those are just some of the concerns, that we try to approve a project which is going to have the least impact. And when you take the traffic study information, alonging with, along with the additional parking, I mean, buying the Sprint building down on Granite Ave might sound like a distance, but if you've got a reliable valet, and if you've got all the extra parking spaces, plus as another resident mentioned, they walk there. I mean, a lot of people do walk there. More people should probably walk. What I've handed out to you is from the, where'd my master plan go? Is from the master plan, and I know everyone hasn't had time to look at it, but I wanted to highlight a few points, because I think they kind of almost helped this committee. Page 141. It's interesting, this committee does a site plan review, and I didn't know there was a difference between a site plan review and a design plan review until I read this, and that one of the concepts is to establish a design review board. And in the future, that might help with different developments in different neighborhoods. I found that was very interesting. And then, encourage, on page 141 also, encourage and recruit desirable businesses to locate in the business zones. So, you've got the business zone, it's almost like you could check off through the master plan, some of what, many, how many people gave input into the plan? I know Emily was, has the chair.
Over the course of the two years, we probably had about 500 different people coming to the various public forums and workshops. We'd have an earlier survey in 2009 that got about 600 people, an online survey. So, there's probably some overlap there, but for this, about 500. That doesn't count the stakeholder interviews that the, the consultant did with, I think they did about 44 stakeholder interviews, counting institutions and department heads in town.
And I forgot the other point you just made. It was done over two years.
Yes.
So, the master plan was long overdue. I, it was how many, 25 years?
1977 was the last comprehensive master plan, that was the executive summary. The full plan was done in 74.
Yeah, yeah. So, this kind of helps your committee. The other point that the developers should probably close their, block their ears, is streamline permitting, licensing, and other regulatory functions as needed and appropriated, appropriate for facilitating property improvements. I think everybody in the room, whether you're for or against it, it is complicated, and that's why we have a zoning Board of Appeals and a planning board to help it. Increase capacity for identifying and attracting the desirable businesses. It just keeps going down the same list, basically, of what you have discussed with the developer and what you can check off. And beautifying the place will, it's already halfway started when you drive through East Milton Square today, when you see the new storefronts. And overall, just improving East Milton Square. On page 150, it was interesting that it said, and I don't know how the neighbors feel, I'm just reading from the master plan, don't blame me, just the messenger, "Consider rezoning mechanic and basset streets from residential to commercial with parking." I had not really heard that discussed by the chief, and I didn't know if he agreed with it, but it's interesting that that came up, those exact two streets that are of the concern. Once again, the handicap pedestrian scale along Adam Street, it's clearly mentions at the bottom, "Consider the town purchase of private property to increase parking supply and/or construct parking structures." This is under just East Milton Square, so I wouldn't want to see a parking garage in our square. But we're talking about the town putting out money, which the developer just did. It's almost like on these two pages, the town is benefiting with somebody else's money, based on what the master plan says. And then it goes further, under opportunities and recommendations, "Support reuse of the theater proposed for reuse as a restaurant." And granted, there is a lot of issues that you have been discussed, reviewed, that you're going to include in the site plan. It was interesting reading what the other site plans have to do versus what a design plan does. I don't, I thought being a selectman was difficult. You always have an audience when there's a proposal in front of you, which we never, didn't always have it, so I don't envy the position you have, but I would say that there are ways to make sure that everything is done safely. And in fact, the crosswalk at Starbucks has been overdue for years. The loading zone overdue for years. These are things that I think with your experience and with the traffic commissioners enforcement, police enforcement, I think that we're going to see a lot of new faces, you know, sitting around tables, and maybe coming up with some other new ideas. So, I want to thank you very much for what's been a very interesting experience following this process through, and I...
Excellent. It's not over yet, but it's over for tonight. We're going to continue the hearing.
If I might, may I just say one more thing?
You might, you might. The, sit down and...
What was just said about the occupants of these buildings has me totally shocked. The 10 Church Street is occupied on one floor by a single professional woman, and on the second floor by a single professional woman. The other building is occupied by a very nice family. These are not drug users, and they are not vacant. Thank you.
That's not what she said, though.
No, you don't have to, you can, we will assume...
You know, you know that's not what I said.
No, I understand. Now, we're going to continue this meeting until February 12. At, I think...
We have more people that want to talk.
I understand, but, yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to speak briefly, we'll make it very quick.
All right.
My name is Mary Gaquen, I live at 9 P.S. Street in East Milton Square. So, I have the headaches of living in the square, and I also have the benefits of living in the square. So, after listening tonight and talking, you know, with the neighbors on my street in the area, I just want to say that I really support this plan that the Falconis have put forward. I think that that building has been long abandoned, and I think it's always been of a concern of what would go in there, what would actually happen for everyone in that area. And just after listening tonight, I know that any project that goes in there, there's going to be concerns, there's going to be problems, but I feel confident and I feel fortunate that somebody is taking the time, the money, and the effort to address all of these. So, I just want to speak in support of this as someone who lives in the square, and I really, when I first heard about it, was very much looking forward to it. I think part of living in the, in Milton and living in East Milton Square is being able to walk down there. I walk in the evening down there. It's nice to see people going to Abbey Park, being in the square, and using it in the evening as well. So, I just wanted to, I know it's been a long night for everyone, but I just wanted to really let everyone know, as a neighbor and someone who lives there, that I really support the, the plan.
Okay.
Okay?
Good, thank you. We're going to continue this hearing until February 12. And I believe we're going to, we've got Thayer Nursery scheduled at 6:45. Do we have it scheduled then?
Yes.
Yes, we just, I remember that. I did that earlier this, this evening. So, I think that we should do this at eight, and we'll probably...
Can we go to 7:15?
No, I think, I, I don't think so, because if Thayer Nursery occurs, it's going to, we're probably going to have to sandwich this with Thayer Nursery. In other words, Thayer Nursery, I assume will take five or six hours. And, yes.
Just one question, if for some reason that Thayer Nursery needs to continue again, or I think, I think, I think that spells...
But having people sit around unnecessarily for long periods of time seems to me not to be a very friendly...
Agreed.
Your, your comment about five to six hours is a cumulative number.
Right.
Not, not in one night.
It is not, not on the 12.
Thank you.
All right, so continue to...
I want to go into the 30.
Continue to which time?
I think that we should, we should continue it till eight.
Okay.
And then, we will start meeting at eight if Thayer coughs out.
That's reasonable.
Eight.
Bring your sleeping bag. Okay.
In that case, Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn.
All right.
Do you want to put him that as your draft?
We are adjourned.